Good evening and welcome to the July 8, 2024 Joint Work Session of the Mayor and City Council and the Planning Commission. Tonight is a special night, not only because we're going to be speaking about the redevelopment application for Lake Forest Mall, which is such an important project for our community, but it is the first meeting that we have had and are hosting in our new digs at 16 South Summit Avenue. And I'm not going to get into everyone's names at this point. We will get into everybody's names in the future, but I do want to just recognize our IT Department, our Public Works, our Communication and Public Engagement Staff, our clerks, and Washington Professional Services. And we'll get more deep in the weeds on who to thank for getting us to this point, but this is an exciting day for all of us, and we're so glad to have you here. So, we have one discussion topic tonight, and it is about the Lake Forest redevelopment application. And I'd like to have Greg Mann from our Planning Department lead us in the presentation.
Good evening. Tonight's joint work session is for SDP-9736-2024, which is a schematic development plan for the redevelopment of the Lake Forest Mall property. As a reminder, the application proposes a multi-stage mixed-use redevelopment with 1,600 dwelling units, 750,000 square feet of employment uses, 250,000 square feet of large format retail, and 220,000 square feet of neighborhood-scale commercial and entertainment amusement uses. A joint public hearing for SDP-9736-2024 was held Monday, June 17th. During the course of the hearing, the Mayor and City Council and Planning Commission expressed a number of concerns and questions.
Greg, hold on, just one sec.
Can't hear.
Yeah, bring up the mic. And yeah.
A joint public hearing for SDP-9736-2024 was held Monday, June 17th. During the course of the hearing, the Mayor and City Council and Planning Commission expressed a number of concerns and questions regarding various aspects of the plan. At the conclusion of a joint work session was scheduled to further address the joint public hearing comments with an emphasis on the following topics: feasibility for stacked retail with residential above, parking, phasing and potential interim uses, signage and streetscape, sense of place in the civic space. And with that, I will turn the presentation over to Bob Dalrymple with the applicant's team, and he will introduce the rest of their team.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm Bob Dalrymple with the law firm of Selzer-Gervich. Welcome the opportunity to be here at your inaugural evening in your new digs. Very nice. It's a different distance down to my notes from where the podium was, so I'm going to have to get new glasses that will adjust to this one. But we'll all make changes as we go, right? Mr. Mayor, you said that this was a special project that's special to the city and to the public, and I couldn't agree more. This feels like a very important night to me. It seems like we're at a point with this project where we're going to learn a lot about the future here. We're going to learn whether we have a project that we're all working collectively to achieve, which I think is all of our collective goals, I should say. But we have some issues that we need to tackle. We've been at this for a considerable period of time now. The city made a determination to do a master plan for this property, which took a period of time quite a while ago. We had an intervening pandemic, which none of us expected, and a lot of consequences and fallout as a result of the pandemic. But now here we are. We have a very detailed master plan, one that is very descriptive in terms of what the applicant can and can't do with this 100 acres. And now it's time for us to put to the test of the process as to whether we can make this master plan into the great project that it has the potential to be. Given the significance of the property and the opportunity, WRS went out and hired a world-class architect in the firm of Gensler and presented to Gensler the master plan, your master plan, and said, there's a lot here, Gensler, that has already been prescribed, but now you need to make it into the very special place that everybody wants to see it become. In doing so, we obviously, there was a lot that we had already prescribed. And there's always the issue of being able to finance the project and to be able to put together the right debt-equity ratios to make a project of this magnitude work. WRS has been at this quite a while, and I think that we have made it clear that we need to get this process going. We need to make sure that there's a project here that can be financed and that can be built. They're committed to making that happen. We've been at it now for, even after the master plan, for many, many months with your staff. We've worked through a lot of the issues that are unique to this property and to this area. And now we're here before you with a schematic development plan that we think creates a real special place. I watched back the public hearing, because I was a little surprised, frankly, by some of the response we got, that maybe we weren't quite communicating how special this project was. Maybe it's we rested on our laurels a little bit too much about the master plan being so prescriptive and being a plan that basically told us what to put down and didn't quite sell it. I'll take responsibility for that. I consider myself the quarterback of this team. And our presentation wasn't what it should have been, because it left a lot of you asking us what makes this special. And to us, it was obvious how special it is. But we took a very self-critical look at what we did and what we need to do. And tonight, we're going to focus initially on sense of place. We're going to do a do-over, and we're going to show you and the public why our implementation of your master plan is so special. And I think that hopefully that will help answer a lot of the other questions and issues that came up at the end of the public hearing that you all forwarded on to us. Gensler is shortly going to walk you through a presentation. We did submit last week a -- I'm not on a clock, am I? I just saw the clock there. I'm thinking, wow, that's telling me I have unlimited time. I could --
Don't push it.
There is a gong.
We submitted last week a very detailed resubmission in response to the comments that we received, both from the public and from Planning Commission and from the Mayor and Council. And we spent some time on sense of place, but I think that being able to show it to you tonight will help in that regard. We also prepared a point-by-point response to the issues that we heard, and that your staff helped us identify that were the major points that they thought really needed to be hammered out at this work session. And we think that we've come a long way, frankly. A lot of the comments, again, we thought we had resolved. We haven't. We haven't made the case for some of them yet, at least in your all's opinions. And it's your opinion that matters the most, because you're the ones that will ultimately approve this project. After we talk about sense of place a little bit more tonight, our desire would be to pause with our presentation and to get some reaction from you and see, what have we done right? What do you think we haven't done well enough? And we'll continue to address it with you. We can then either go through, point-by-point, what we submitted, and after each, we can have dialogue with that, or we can see what's on your mind, and we can respond in that way. So, we're open to however you want to proceed with that, whatever you think is going to be the best way to get to the end result. And the end result is for us to walk away from tonight, all knowing that this is headed towards an approval. We do appreciate very much the accommodation of the schedule that we laid out. As you know, we came to the city several weeks ago and said, we're getting to a point in this process now where we need to get some decisions made. We need to take this out and finish the financing on it and to have some certainty that we're going to move this project forward. And that's why I led off by saying, this just feels like a very important night to me, because I think that we need to accomplish a lot in a short period of time. But I feel like it's all there. I really do. I feel like this is such a special project. I've been working on it for a long time now, so maybe it's not coming across how exciting this project is to us. But I can assure you, speaking on behalf of WRS and our design team, that we're damn proud of what has been put together here, and it is a really good project. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Gensler, and they will do a short presentation, I think, and then we can start having some back and forth, and you tell us at that point how you want us to proceed.
Just one quick note. I wanted to let everyone know that Councilmember Rob Wu is joining us and participating via Zoom. Please.
Okay. Great, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Council, and Planning Commission. My name's Carolyn Sponza. I'm the Principal at Gensler and a Planner and Architect.
And my name is Victor Pachati, Design Director with Gensler.
And my name is Jared Krieger. I'm the Principal and Managing Director, Principal in Charge of the Project.
So, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, and Planning Commission members. Just a pleasure to have this introductory forum with you in your new council chambers. It's great to have both technology and air conditioning working. The agenda that you have before you essentially lays out what Bob just shared. Commissioner Bauer, thank you last time for asking us about place-making. That was a question that we really took to heart. As Bob suggested, there has been a narrative there, but your question prompted us to go back and refine it and present it and share that with you all this evening as a framework or a basis upon which I think all the development and all the other issues we discussed can be placed. So, we'll begin with that. The other topics down the list are specific topics of discussion that emerged from our last forum with you all. Of course, the conversation can go wherever you would like it to go, but we did want to organize our presentation and discussion into those topics, and then we'll take them in order and have discussion on each one. But on the topic of place, we wanted to begin with a vision statement that really aims to articulate what is unique, what differentiates, and what makes place on the site. And we've all seen a lot of vision statements. We have attempted to be very careful and thoughtful about the words selected in this statement, so that they will be evident in the design work that you see looking forward. We use the term revived because we believe there is a history to this site, both cultural and environmental, that bears revisiting. You see social place. It's fair to say each mixed-use development seeks to create social space. We believe that the unique positioning of different programs on this project will create a unique social environment in this market. Reconnecting and knitting, very important to this development. You will see, hopefully, evidence of how this development looks outward, perhaps more than many others, in order to speak to neighborhoods in the surrounding area, as well as a destination for Gaithersburg as a whole. And then interconnection through ponds, parks, plazas, tree canopies. That speaks to the integration of nature and being inspired by certain elements that are there, and expanding the notion of nature, well-being, biophilia, to populate this and become part of the place. In its pre-development state, this particular site was agricultural. There were fruit orchards, dairy farms, crop farms. And in our research, those communities create a social network. The farmers, the merchants, the residents created a social network and a fabric that was part of the place. Over time, the site evolved and developed into more retail uses. We also believe and want to give a little bit of due to the freestanding American Mall, which one could say was also had its time and place as a social hub, as a way to create community. On a personal note, I've lived about 20 years of my life close to the Southdale Mall, which is in Edina, Minnesota, and it was the first enclosed mall of its type built in the United States. Victor Groen in 1950 designed that. And if you do the historical research, it truly was a social and communal place, with public art, places for community. So, we just want to acknowledge that the freestanding mall had a moment where it also captured socialization and community. Over time, issues emerged with the freestanding mall that are well-known to all of us: hermetically sealed environments catering to the automobile culture, leading to large parking areas, and sort of a dearth of natural amenities. And that's what we are here to transform today. So, this is a diagram that has been part of our design guidelines that really, hopefully, encapsulates in one diagram the mission of knitting and reconnecting the site to surrounding communities. You will see, and hopefully have seen, that the site and the architecture face outward and send sort of tethers of activity to weave into surrounding neighborhoods. The goal is that, over time, while this will be a social hub, it will set an example and inform future development and also be an economic catalyst for that development. The development is then divided into a series of interconnected neighborhoods. Those neighborhoods are connected in a great degree by open places, parks, plazas. Distinct from walking down a narrow sidewalk along a street, you are mostly passing from place to place and space to space within this development. I'll summarize this slide by raising the topic of family. Not family in the limited sense, but family in the sense of familial and community. What we believe is unique in this development is the full interweaving of residential infrastructure, residential housing, in all its forms closely blended with employment opportunities, commercial, retail, entertainment. This development does not have a totally distinct residential neighborhood and a totally distinct commercial. If a purchaser of a home or renter would like to be in a more residential forward, that is available. If there are renters or buyers that would prefer to be in the hub of entertainment and commercial activity, that is available. We believe that sort of interweaving is very unique to this project. It will build familial connections between those who live there: families of all types, diverse ages, ethnicities, singles and families alike. We believe that the integration and the proximity of the residential with the other mixed-use programs makes a true mixed-use space where folks can feel safe, because the neighborhood is active in all of its areas, seven days a week, mornings and evenings. So, this is the existing condition that we're beginning with today. We know what opportunities and issues this presents, but this aerial always tells a story that, as the mall was planned, it appears as if an object had landed in the middle of what had been stitched-together neighborhoods, and then sent out these shockwaves that made this 100-acre parking lot around it. We see this as an extraordinary opportunity for transformation. What I'd like to do is walk you through a series of concept diagrams. These are high-level and conceptual, but they begin to layer up the story of how we thought about place-making on this particular site. The titles are a little mislabeled here, so this is the diagram that we call "Pavement, Lake, and Forest." The existing condition is the existing building and primarily pavement, but there are a couple of amenities that sort of stand alone: the ponds that are on what is now Block A and Block B, surrounded by trees. That's a germ of an idea that we think of as "Lake Forest." The next step in the diagram is to take that greenery, that forest aspect, and stretch it through the site and around the perimeter site that now reestablishes an ecosystem of nature that reconnects the ponds and the forests that are there through the site to other neighborhoods and reintroduces sort of a green network. The greenery then sponsors patterns of movement. Hierarchically, there are major areas of movement and secondary areas of movement. The thick blue line indicates that there's sort of a diagonal path that connects the ponds and the forests in the northwest corner, through Block B, which is the entertainment-activity dining district, southward along Street 1, which is a tree-lined boulevard and widens into parks and plazas. Then it turns eastward through a triangular park that really favors recreation for residents and families in the southern portion of the site. The thinner lines show that what doesn't exist now, along the green corridors, there is the ability to stitch together neighborhoods from the east to the west, north to the south, passing directly through the site. There are recreational trails that circumvent the ponds, and folks can do their exercise loop. It's about 3.7 miles to walk the full perimeter of the development in what will now be greened, tree-lined recreational paths. Then the architecture comes next: building form, which helps further define, enclose, and create edges to some of the parks and plazas defined by the greenery. While this is just a sketch diagram, it is a place to notice that the architecture all faces outward with what we call people space, program, distinct from, say, things like parking garages. The presence of structured parking is almost entirely hidden in this development, which we believe is very, very unique in this market. There is no threshold to pass through of parking garage or large format retail. It is pedestrian-scale people space that faces outward in this development. This is a diagram that, in your packets, I think was an illegible little piece in a corner, so my thanks to Greg, who was able to make this legible for you all. A question came up last time. Commissioner Bauer, I think you were asking about some kind of hierarchy of skyline and what would define the architecture here. What we are proposing in this sketch diagram, which will be integrated into the design guidelines, are actually specifying locations in a quite prescriptive way, where there is a signature corner, a block, a moment, where a vertical element ought to mark that corner. Secondarily, this is beginning to outline important, we call, street walls or street framing facades to enclose space, and the hierarchy there, followed by a tertiary layer of public art or other public pieces that mark unique programs. So, this is a first sketch, but look for this in a revised design guideline that helps to inform and bring variety to that skyline portion. So, from the aerial that you saw floating over the mall, this is the aspirational vision of where we are going next: a network of tree-lined streets and boulevards that subdivide the site into smaller parcels, heavily populated and woven together by nature: wellness, well-being, walking paths and trails, and then using the architecture to define the edges and the parks and the plazas that will make the spaces special. At this point, we also brought sort of a flyover video to share with you all, just to provide an overview of the site, so we'll share that now. You can recognize that we are beginning in our drone view here at the north of the site, looking diagonally into Block B. The plazas on Block B are outward-facing, intentionally to allow drivers and passersby to know that that is a hub of activity, not just for the development, but for the city proper. As we navigate our way around, we're flying past Blocks C and D. You can see the dialogue between employment buildings and mixed-use residential. And as we come around, Block C begins to appear in the foreground. We call this Block C East, which is mixed-use residential, capping and wrapping large format retail, and then mixed-use residential, capping retail and employment functions on the west side. I'm noticing a 60-foot-tall sign there that is not in the plan anymore. So, just a couple slides, and then we'll pause and turn it over to Council and Planning Commission, where you would like to take the conversation. But just to reprise the five neighborhoods that have their own characters, that make up the site, and here are some of the place-making characteristics of the different neighborhoods. The northwest, Blocks A and B, really favor the natural. While that is a theme that threads throughout the site, that one's very much about nature. Moving clockwise, Lake Forest North is modern, mixed-use, commercial, and retail, as well as employment buildings. Lake Forest South and Lake Forest Square begin to favor more low-rise residential. Parks are more informal with play for children. And then Lake Forest West, it's called transitional, because there's a blending there between low-rise residential, moving up into transit, civic space, as well as employment. So, at this juncture, the packet that you all saw has a block-by-block description of some of the place-making characteristics. We can go through that if you would like us to, but we wanted to open it up for any questions or comments on place-making specifically, or you can take us to specific blocks, or if you want to skip over the block-by-block, we can go right to the list of topics that Bob shared with you earlier. So, we'd like to take the conversation where you would like to take it.
Victor, thank you very much for the presentation, and I wanted to turn it over to Planning Commission first, given that sense of place was a big item for them in the public hearing. John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm a little surprised you stopped early, because when I went through the presentation online, there's quite a bit more to see and to hear about. But maybe I'll frame it up this way and stop at a macro view, because I think there's a lot to be discussed at a more micro or more specific level. But since you haven't really discussed that yet, I won't go there. I think one of the things I appreciate is that you did sort of step back and reestablish that place-making was a priority and began to describe how it could play out here. My initial reaction is good, but you need to amplify it. So, by that, I mean whatever those ideas were you presented were fantastic. Now, they have to jump off the plan. I mean, they have to be so recognizable in its physical form that you don't have to tell the story. It's obvious to anybody who sees the plan or walks onto the site when it's ultimately built. Does that make sense? That may be true after we get through some of the detailed stuff, but right now, it still feels a little bit like you've told us, now you still have to show us, or still have to prove it, right? And a couple of examples, just to kind of get the discussion going, and then I'll let other folks jump in here. If you look at Street 1, for example, it's a north-south kind of axis and spine to the project. One of the opportunities there is for that to really sing as that thing that knits together and becomes kind of the spine for all of these different experiences and where all of the neighborhoods sort of plug in and where one could experience the whole kind of a cross-section, almost literally, of the whole community by walking that whole line. And it seems a little understated right now, right? It could be more, it could grab on to more of the natural that you're trying to promote. I think it could grab on to a little more of, you know, there's a block right in the middle, which I think is proposed for multifamily, it's sort of just south of Street Two, which in streetscape scale is a whole block long worth of building, right? Maybe that's not where that needs to front. Maybe that needs to front to an internal street and something more porous and more interesting needs to happen along one, again, to kind of take you from Street Three all the way up to Street Two visually and sort of encourage you because you're not just looking at a wall of one thing. It's just an example of where I think that can amplify your whole story a lot by just taking it, just nudging it one more step. The other sort of macro idea for me is what the Transit Center does, the influence it has on the west side of the project. First of all, I guess we'll have a discussion at some point about who gets to influence the design of the Transit Center and how that's actually going to play out. But it does have to be integrated in a way that makes sense. So either it's a, either it's hidden, which I don't necessarily think is the right answer, but you kind of have this choice of either it's going to be downplayed and be a background player or it's going to be celebrated in a real focal and a real kind of drop a stone in the pond and everything kind of radiates out from there and becomes a real piece of energy for that side of the project. And I'm not seeing either yet. It's another example of amplifying whatever it should be, let's do it, let's see it, you know? There may be some constraints there because you don't know what it is yet. And the county hasn't really given up too much in the way of the true design of the facility. But I think as an element within the plan, it's got to have a point of view that you're going to have to apply to it. We're going to have to influence that somehow. And the kind of the last area I would look at is parking. And I would think about this scenario of knitting things together when you're on foot. We can't deny, and we're never going to be able to talk ourselves out of the fact that people will get here in cars. In fact, they're probably going to need to traverse the site in cars. People who live in, what is it, block O, you know, down in the sort of southwest corner, southeast corner, excuse me. Yeah, they're going to go to the pool with three small children and need to take stuff with them. They're not going to be able to walk. They're going to, you know, go there and meet folks that are going to be maybe from out of the guests that are from somewhere else. And, you know, where cars go for these incidental events and, you know, activities is really, really important. I think intuitively, the Lake District is going to be this entertainment kind of hub. What we all hope is that it's successful, not because the neighbors go there, but because everybody in Gaithersburg and beyond go there. And they're not going to go there if it's too complicated or not intuitive enough about where to leave their cars. So I think we really have to have a frank discussion about how the vehicular stuff is, to use your terms, and knit it into this and make sense for people that don't navigate it every day, but it's just intuitive and it's there and it's available. Same thing with sort of the scenario whereby people who live in the residential district to the southeast, you know, they'll have parties, right? And I know you promoted the idea of doing parking on Odenhall, which makes sense for the houses that face Odenhall, but the line of homes that face inward. You know, it's a long way to go to figure out that's where you can park if you're stopping by for dinner at one of those houses. So that sort of discussion I want to get into a little deeper, again, the macro stuff. So my three big points are, whatever the idea is, it's starting to emerge, which I'm really excited about. I think you've really done a good job of kind of coming back and reconnecting us to where some of these big ideas can happen, but let's see it amplified. Get the idea of this maybe spine road that really gives us and celebrates all of those points you've made and make it a little bit more pedestrian-friendly. And then let's figure out this parking thing because I just don't see it the way the plan's laid out right now. So those are my sort of three big ideas at the macro scale.
Thank you, John. Matt, did you want to chime in here?
Yeah, sure. I'll, that was great, John, thank you. I think we've got a good set of guidelines that are now very good. And we just, I think what John says, that great is like the next step up. And a lot of it has to do with that pedestrian flow detail and car flow detail. So and then really just establishing a theme on some things that I think we just just aren't in the guidelines, like Transit Center and some others. But thank you so much for all that other growth on the residential side on block C and on that little Lake District, which again, I think is a prime billboard for this project. It's going to be the honey that attracts the flies, right? So.
At least it's honey.
Yeah.
At least it's honey.
You could have used another.
Yeah, my wife corrected me over the years. So it's, I think the concerns I still have about the feasibility of block C, I think isn't, you know, if this development scheme, which is improving, you know, eliminating some of that single-loaded, turning that G shape is a good idea. Some of the, it's starting to evolve into a more efficient, I think, residential over that retail. I'm still pretty positive there's some puzzling that needs to go on there. And I'm worried that if we set it down in this preliminary SDP, that we are going to have to back up when we get to final for something that's. So I'm still strongly advocating that you present a few options. This option, you're in love with it, keep this option. Give me some plugins, give us some plugins, give me you flexibility in the future with some plugins. Say here's option A, option B, option C. They can have that same retail components with the grade change that you guys are talking about and I think deeply in love with. That's great. Let's make, let's really work on puzzling out that residential so it's as efficient as possible. The constant stepping up and stepping down of the floors worries me from efficiency standpoint. A lot of the dead end, which some of which have been eliminated, some of the single-loaded's been eliminated. That's great. Just the number of stairs, number of cores, how we get there. I'm worried that it's going to put in a huge impediment on getting block C built. And what we don't want is a townhouse community that 20 years from now becomes a mixed-use community, right? So we're really anxious to make sure that you've got some options on block C that are, you know, shorthand or buildable. Again, retail, and clearly I wasn't clear last time, retail's not my concern. Residential over retail, where that retail changes floors, you know, number of floors all staying underneath that 85-foot limit, you know, buildable, practical, type-three limit, is a big concern to making sure that this gets built sooner than later and not forcing us back through a process where we have to revise this, you know, SDP in order to get a final site plan that's feasible. So you can call it whatever you want, financeable, whatever it is you want, but a developable parcel. And then I believe, certainly from my vote, I would love to see some options. And I think, and I think Greg, we can put options in a plan, right? So, you know, options may be a best solution here. Your best guess right now, let's puzzle out a couple more. You guys are some of the world's master puzzlers. Puzzle out a couple other options that are maybe more efficient. And then, you know, we can get to final site plan and have one that's, that your partners who are going to build that multifamily agree is the most efficient to build.
And just to note, block C is a topic later in the presentation, so we'll carry those comments forward to that particular piece of it. Thank you.
Yeah, great.
Okay, again, sense of place. Phil, go ahead.
I think I echo what John and Matt both said. I think looking at what we've been reviewing so far this evening, probably the biggest question mark for me is actually the Lake District. Specifically, the part of the Lake District that borders 355, between 355 and Russell. In a vacuum, in a rendered site plan, I think it looks awesome. I think the devil in the details is how you get people over there, how you knit that parcel to actually be a usable part of this development and be the amenity that we're all talking about. You've got four lanes of traffic that people have to go back and forth adjacent to an intersection. As we get later in the presentation, I think you'll show us some ideas of what you're thinking of there. You know, benches and other things where you want people to dwell and play right next to six lanes of traffic, a high-speed turn lane, fender-bender alley. Whatever is going on there, I think, you know, we just need to be realistic how much that's actually going to contribute and tie in here. I think the other thing that, interestingly, the flyover, I think was the most honest graphic we've seen to date. About the topography that's actually there. That flyover was a perfect illustration that your deck is, you know, 15 feet, all of the pedestrian areas, you know, 15 feet above the water. We're not, this is not going to be Rio unless you happen to go there after a hurricane when the water is up high in the storm retention pond. So I think, again, what that experience is for people, is it going to be as much of a waterfront promenade as you like it to be, I think, is a concern.
Yes, so sorry, Phil. So I think I'll exactly write, you know, I'm very impressed by the flyover and some of the renderings, but it hasn't translated to the civil drawings, obviously these things are iterative. But that was a great shot of a very interesting articulated deck edge on that pond, which I think is a critical component of this retail environment. So if that translates to a civil, to real life, as Phil's saying, then that's great.
Lloyd, go ahead.
Again, I'd like to congratulate you on a presentation that was very well done. My concern is when I look at Montgomery Village Avenue and Oden Hall and Russell Avenue, I see natural barriers to pedestrians coming in to the sense of place. If there's any way or any, I guess, pathway that would allow pedestrians to come across those major boulevards, and they are. Montgomery Village Avenue is a fairly heavily trafficked avenue. Oden Hall, Lost Knife, they're very, very wide and they're not pedestrian-friendly. If there's some way of creating, helping the sense of place with creating this accessway across these large roads to bring people in so they don't necessarily have to all park in the new development. They could park across the street. There's plenty of parking spaces in a lot of the, like around Lake Forest Boulevard that are office buildings that aren't being utilized during the late evening, early morning. I could see that as being utilized and creating more of a sense of place for this project. Other comments, we'll get down further into the details, but that's my biggest concern, the roadways around and how they can be integrated in.
Thank you, Lloyd. Okay, council members, I want to open it up to you. If there's any comments on sense of place, Jim, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much for the presentation. I really appreciate how much you took to heart what the public was saying at the meeting. Obviously, we had a lot of people here, people were very interested in the project, obviously. And I 100% agree with you, this is absolutely a transformational opportunity for the city. I think all of us in this room are invested in the success of the project for you and for the city. In terms of sense of place, I really appreciated that flyover. That was a really helpful thing just to see it coming together. My concern has continued to be the ability to knit the neighborhoods together. And I think on, on your, sorry, I lost it in my notes. On packet page six, you talked about vibrant, making a vibrant and diverse community interconnected through ponds, canopies, parks and plazas. One of the challenges that I've been feeling is that they, each neighborhood has their parks and plazas, but that connectivity, I feel, has been a challenge. And I think Commissioner Bauer bringing up the opportunity that you have with Street One. And even in the approved sketch plan, it showed an additional strip of green space along block D. So if you talk about puzzling, you know, I was looking at the blocks and wondering if we were to rotate that multi-story building there in block E, if that were rotated and that was on, you know, fronting the cross-street, Street Two. It creates an opportunity to maybe move some of that housing that we're concerned about over by the Transit Center, feeling like it's squished in there. So whether you leave it there and maybe there's an opportunity for additional green space as a buffer to the Transit Center, or maybe it's shifted over entirely and instead of Avenue or Street Five going all the way through, maybe Street Six does. And it gives you some opportunity to extend that linear park that you have coming up from the residential. Then that really does become a grand boulevard that really creates that spine that connects everything. So that was something that I was playing with in my head. Obviously, that creates some other dominoes. But I was kind of approaching this like a website developer. You think about user journeys, right? And the different kinds of people that'll be using the space. So you have a Lake Forest resident that's walking. You have adjacent community members that'll be walking. But then you've got car drivers that are coming to the shops. You've got car drivers coming to the employment spaces. And then you've got the Transit Center people are walking. And let's make sure that each of those experiences we've thought through, what are they walking past, you know, what are the storefronts? You know, what are those draws going to be? I think when we get into the details of those other blocks, we can maybe drill down a little bit more on that. But, you know, the Lake neighborhood is roughly the size of Crown's Business District, right? So that's currently four restaurants and a number of shops. You know, is that kind of what you're envisioning? I mean, we have the square footage, but what are those draws going to be? What are people going to be coming to Lake Forest to experience? Is it dinner and a show? You know, what are those pieces? Understanding you're not going to have, you know, leases at this point. But I think it's going to, it'll go a long way to determining what is that sense of place for each of those different users because they're each going to have different experiences. I'll save my other questions for later, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Did you guys want to address any of that?
Yes, we do.
Now, or, okay, go ahead.
I could jump in on one thing that, it came up in a couple of different statements that I think we can appreciate. And maybe you've shed some light on something that might have been lost from the master plan until now is a little bit of the north-south connectivity. Something that we've been kicking around the last couple of weeks based on some of those comments is really using Street One as that tree-lined boulevard that stitches the public spaces and pocket parks. You know, we kind of took it a different direction rather than squeezing some of the residential on block E and F, like you had suggested. And we can get into some of the details as to why we think we would try to avoid that. But one thing that we were looking at is there's a large public vertical space, if I can just point. So there's this large vertical linear park that's along there. And then as you had noted, you kind of skip any of that and it becomes more of a normal public street. Then you get to the open space again that flows into block C and B. Is one thing we're suggesting is shifting and extending this into block D and basically taking the two buildings that are here and shifting them to the east where you could have a long, more linear, more green, more linear park that stitches it north and south.
That's the right idea.
That's great.
We could work with staff on just the logistics of how to incorporate that in the plan, but we felt that that could be an enhancement and doesn't really impact any of the functional layout.
And I think the rest of the comments were great. It'll help Victor and I as we go through the rest of the neighborhoods really drill into that sense of place as it's reflected in all of the green spaces and urban spaces in the neighborhoods.
Great. I think there's going to be a couple more comments too. Jamil, you wanted to.
Sure, and I just wanted to echo Commissioner Hopkins' comments in terms of providing some optionality. I think it would be all in our interest to do so. And I'll have some additional, just point questions on the memo for clarification when we get further through.
Thank you. Neil?
So I really want to focus most of my questions on things that'll come later, so I'll be very brief right now on the sense of place. I think the planning commission has addressed it really, and Jim has addressed those nicely. I'm just wondering, I can't really tell from these drawings, this is not my area of expertise, but where do kids go to kick balls around and which parks are appropriate for people playing? It looks like a lot of small parks. I just wonder if there's a place where kids can play soccer and toss a football. Where do those, where do those lie?
They are not baseball or soccer field size spaces in the development because of the grid layout, some of the prescriptive requirements of the sketch plan and the master plan. So this was not master planned for sort of large ball field, soccer field, football, those types of spaces. There are playgrounds and play spaces embedded throughout. This triangular park here and the southeast corner, as well as a linear park here, and an entire block that would be developed as a clubhouse, pool, playground amenity. So a variety of activities not at the scale of a baseball or soccer field.
Okay, I'm just, I can see, you know, six-year-olds having a good time in these parks. I'm just wondering what 12-year-olds or 14-year-olds. I'm just wondering what 12-year-olds or 14-year-olds are going to do, aside from mayhem. I would prefer to avoid the mayhem part. So it's, I think that's something that we'll have to address as we go forward. I think one other point was made in terms of, this is being designed as a walkable community, which is great. I happen to live a block from Whole Foods, but when I go grocery shopping and I have a hungry 17-year-old at home, I have to drive because I need a way to actually lug all that stuff home. So we just have to make sure that, that we understand that people need, unfortunately, need motorized conveyance to get around even inside a community that's designed this way and make sure that's accommodated.
Well, if we may address that, I think we have spent months coordinating with staff, both in terms of parking calculations and locations. And the function and arrival and where one gets to parking is meticulously worked out. Now, we don't have a specific diagram that shows that and we could create it. But the access, how one arrives from multiple vantage points, which blocks are served by which parking, and the capacities both on-street and within garages has been meticulously laid out and worked out with staff, I believe to their satisfaction.
All right, that's fine, I'm, I'm not in that loop, so I'll take your, take your word on that one, thank you.
If I could maybe pose a question that has to do with connectivity of the development to surrounding neighborhoods. And we've heard this before about, you know, traversing what are major arterial roads. And since those arterial roads are owned by city, county and state, what, how can the development team address crossing something that's not on the property and not in our scope?
Well, I mean, I guess there's a couple ways to think about it, you're right. There'll be a role to play as an advocate for some of these intersection improvements, probably both at the developer and the design consultant team level, so there's that. There is recognizing which intersections already improved for at least decent pedestrian crossings and make sure that the access to those aren't, you know, circuitous and convoluted, that there's, there's direct access to some of those and they also mean something when you come across into the development. And, and you know, there will be, you know, obviously Montgomery Village Avenue is a state road, but Russell, Russell City, right? Or is it county at that point?
Russell City.
Russell City.
Yeah.
So you've got the people in the room that can help you figure that out and, and there's, there's plenty of opportunity to do that. Same with Oden Hall, so there's, there is, there's, there's opportunities, it's just a matter of pushing hard for where those make sense. Nobody on the other end of that description or that argument takes it lightly. Like they don't hear you mention an idea and say, yeah, let's do that. It takes some work to make, make the case for and, and make it, make it viable and then, you know, we can see what can happen. Hi Gary.
Good evening, Gary Hunterberg with Rogers. I would like to add to the conversation, I'm going to pop up every now and then. But we, we are working with State Highway and Montgomery Village Avenue and we don't have a specific graphic for it. But the intersections, including 355 and Montgomery Village, Russell Montgomery Village, Lost Knife and Montgomery Village, those all have a free movement dedicated right lane that you don't have to stop. Those are all going away. And we, we've incorporated that into our plan, but also we've met with the state a couple times where they have a pedestrian priority. It's really a pilot project that they're incorporating and hoping to implement in the next two years, where all those intersections that are huge right now have a free right, there are four lanes, multiple turn lanes. Those free rights go away and they're reducing or necking down the intersection for that pedestrian component.
There's your answer, thank you.
And I think that's something that Lloyd mentioned and that, and we're also doing that at Russell, Oden Hall. The city's working on a Russell Avenue re-envisioning. So we've, we've got a meeting actually this week with Public Works to continue our coordination with them. And then we're also meeting with the county on Lost Knife. So there's a lot going on and a lot of good things and again, pedestrian orientated to make that work.
Great, good to hear.
Thank you. And I'd just like to add one thing to what Gary said. The city has a strong relationship with State Highway and with the county. It takes time sometimes, but we're, we've been strong advocates and we've gotten what we've, what we've asked for by and large in other areas where road improvements were needed. So I'm, I'm speaking on behalf of staff now, but I'm sure we're, we will do everything we can to advocate for things that are needed in order to get people across those major thoroughfares.
I will just say Neil is right, the gist of what Neil says is right, but there are several examples where we have not gotten what we want. But that being said, I'm, I'm hopeful that everything related to the streets around here, we will get what we need to get. So I'm going to turn it back over to you guys to move forward.
Woo, did you want to ask Woo if you?
I'm communicating with Woo through text, so thank you, nothing, thank you.
You got you.
I'll turn it back over to you guys.
There were a couple of open items on, you know, Block C in particular, Block F. We, we have other content later on that we could circle back to those particular topics.
Right.
So it sounds like Commissioner Bauer, you'd like us to get into the detail of placemaking on, on each of the blocks?
Well, if you're ready to go there, sure.
Yeah, we have it, we're, we want to be sensitive to everybody's time.
If, if you want to see that, sure. Because we, we can do, go that direction and we can go directly to sort of the responses to the.
Here's the thing, so the other thing I probably should have said, and you know this as well as anybody, but you know, we're talking about SDP level here and we need to be careful that we aren't implying that things like design of the buildings is approved, because we're not doing that tonight. We're looking at the macro level planning issues and being sure that what's depicted on the SDP plan, the actual SDP plan, not everything else that's gone with it, doesn't preclude getting to some good answers and some high-quality design later on, even if it's already started. So it may be, I was sort of talking myself into the idea that maybe we don't get into the detail yet, but get to the responses so that, that macro level stuff gets out of the way first. Yeah, that's a totally fair comment, that, you know, that's true for the architecture, that's true for the visuals. These are the guidelines that are being set up for future development and future detail. So we will be back in front of you, hopefully us, we'll be back in front of you for future details of future design of the buildings and the placemaking and the landscape and signage.
I think your comment is spot on and consistent with our thinking as well.
Woo, then I've done something wrong.
I'll give you, I'll give you some, some time to think about changing your. Now, we, we, we look forward to getting to that level and that's what I was saying earlier. We're ready, we're ready to move to that next level where we can get into that level of detail and design.
Thank you.
So jumping into some of the targeted topics, we'll start with the design guidelines updates. So after the last meeting, we reflected a bit about what we could augment in the design guidelines and what could be edited to really reflect the sense of place. As the design guidelines will act as the DNA for the project moving forward. I feel like this is cutting out, are you guys seeing me okay?
Yes, we're, we're just going to.
Okay.
Yeah, just proceed, we're aware that all of the microphones are having some trouble.
Okay, good, I'll keep going, thank you. So what you'll see on the next slide is a table of contents of the current design guidelines as submitted in draft format. We made, or we're proposing four major updates and augmentations of the design guidelines. The first is in the project vision section, which is in Chapter One. We really want that project vision piece to reflect some of the things that Victor talked about in establishing sense of place. So that would be the vision statement, the values around civic spaces and those very important spaces that knit together all of those social places. The second augmentation is in Chapter Two, which is the organizational controls. And we are very sensitive and we heard you last time about needing to think about the skyline features and the landmarks and how to really define those for future development. So we're proposing adding a new section to the guidelines which talks specifically about that. In the residential section, we've made many upgrades, which I'll talk about in the next pages. And we have also made some significant signage modifications, which I would like to go into detail in shortly. So firstly, just really quickly, the skyline features and landmarks. What you see here is sort of a mock-up of the page that we want to include. It's formatted in the same way as the rest of the framework pages. It establishes a series of vistas, key corners and landmarks, and will in large part pick up some of those concepts that you saw in Victor's earlier sketches. We establish some major vistas and secondary vistas, all part of a strategy of creating internal and external wayfinding to the project. On the residential design principles section, the residential design principles, can you guys hear me better if I put this down?
Okay.
They, they really talk about the three neighborhoods at the south, south portion of Lake Forest. What we've done in this section is we've established a series of design principles that basically governs all of the residential typologies. Those were in there initially. But what we've done to the individual residential type sheets is basically made, make a modification where we've taken out those representative elevations, which I think somebody might have said were slightly uninspiring, beef up the actual bulk controls for construction of those units and then augment each of the neighborhoods with more information about the desired character of those units. What you see in the lower right-hand corner is an example of what we're proposing for Lake Forest Square. Lake Forest Square is the central neighborhood and we want it to be a vibrant place. So we've established a very conceptual color palette that carries a number of interesting and different color materials, proposes use, use of flat roofs with terraces that overlook all of the main spaces so that that sociability at the lower levels could carry through to the higher levels of the building and establish other architectural details that are consistent across that neighborhood. That is just one example of those three neighborhoods that we really listened to establishing an identity for those and reflected those and will reflect those in the revised guidelines. If we can fast forward to signage. Spoiler alert on the section. Okay, thank you. So yes, again on signage, we heard you. And if the theme of the day is making four types of changes, we made four types of signage changes that I want to talk through in detail. We had some discussion about the monument sign labeled as M1 at the corner of Montgomery Village Avenue on Block A. There was discussion about the types of identities and neighborhood identification included in that sign. What we've done is basically changed the design of that sign so that it's smaller, more compact and that it only has the site ID name included. All of the individual neighborhood and tenant identifications have been removed from that sign and we have a visualization of that that I'll share. We also had three examples of what we called the M2 sign and that was a 30-foot tall monument sign. Those were located at the intersection of Russell Avenue and Street Two, Lost Knife, sorry, Oden Hall Avenue and Lost Knife Road and Montgomery Village Avenue and Street One. In this revised plan, we've reduced those three locations to one location, which is at the intersection of Montgomery Village Avenue and Street One. That is the only 30-foot monument sign that is now proposed for this project. The next tier of monument signs, which were the 15-foot monument signs, which we called the small signs, have been relocated at key locations. One is at the intersection of Russell Avenue and Street Two, the other is at the intersection of Lost Knife and Street Two. And what those really do is kind of form a bookmark, an important element to get people into those parking locations as they approach the site. The last M3 sign, 15-foot sign, is at Oden Hall and Street One. Again, that's going to be a super important decision point to bring people up that sort of main central spine of the project. And lastly, the city sign and public art that we had shown at the corner of Montgomery Village Avenue and Lost Knife Road, we've eliminated that from the plan because we don't feel like it's necessary at this point.
Can, can I just ask a question about that? Because that's, that's the first I can recall that coming up in our, in a discussion with us. And are you saying that there won't be a city logo on any of the signs around the community as planned currently?
No, that, that's not the case at all. There is a location for digital advertising signage that I think the city would have access to and then I think certainly other locations could be up for discussion as well.
And will, will there be other location opportunities for public art?
Oh yes, absolutely. There's another section in the design guidelines that talks about public art, types of public art. And we're really thinking about integration of those in all of the public spaces. But also we've identified some areas where like wall murals might be an augmentation in the Lake District, for instance. So yes, we highly encourage integration of public art.
Okay, great.
Before we leave this, I do want to say that these changes result in a total reduction of sign area of 2,600 square feet. So again, just the signage approval process has been outlined in the design guidelines. What the design guidelines are basically proposing is an entitlement level document. So those are major locations and general types of signs. We do intend to submit a comprehensive site and plan, which will also require planning commission approval that will get into specific locations, quantities, volume calculations and maybe some more ideas about materiality and, and sort of theme and style of the signs. The last level of approval will be signage, design and tenor planning documents, so basically like signage permit plans. And those will get into like super details about the types of lettering, the sizes of the signs, the logos that'll be on there, the materials, typefaces, all of that good stuff. So just to sort of leave this topic with one last visual. Last time there was some comments about people crossing the roadway here, so that's not really the focus of this, the sign is. I think what you'll see is a greatly reduced sign in size that eliminates all of the tenant signage from the bottom. So this is just clearly a place identifier at the corner of Block A. And then just for reference, again, in the bottom right-hand corner, the one larger monument sign at 30 feet and then the smaller monument signs at 15 feet are shown there for context. And this is a summary of all of the proposed larger monument signs. Any questions on these?
Any questions? Not seeing any. Oh, okay, Neil.
I don't have a question, I just want to say I, I didn't love the giant sign before at this corner and this is a like night and day, it's beautiful, I think it's really going to be great.
Thank you.
Jim.
My only question is thinking about traffic approaching from the east side, so Montgomery Village, Asbury. We've lost almost all of the signage on those, we have lost the signage on the corners. So just thinking about where people are going to be turning into the community. Are they going to be making a left turn, for example, from Montgomery Village into, on the Street One? If you're coming in from Asbury, is the idea that they go up farther? Can you just kind of talk a little bit about that?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
Sorry about that.
No, that's okay. Yeah, this is a good one. So those, the M2 and M3 signs, the 15 and 30-foot signs, those are supposed to be cues to tell people entering the development, like this is where you turn, this is how you get in. So in Montgomery Village Avenue, we are anticipating right turns into that intersection with Street One. Lost Knife, I think that's a right-in, right-out only intersection and M3 is basically all movement. Gary, can correct me if I got that wrong? But the intent of locating those signs there really is wayfinding or directional, so very direct cues on telling people how to get in. We did eliminate the sign at the bottom of Lost Knife and Oden Hall, we just thought that was more general identification and less wayfinding. So on the perimeter, we were very careful to just locate signs where we thought there would be major decision points. You do see the D1 signs, which I didn't talk about, those are district identifiers. Those will be secondary signs to help pedestrians and vehicles wayfind in those areas and kind of understand where they're moving through. So I think that answered your question.
It does. Will there be signage to get, direct people into the garage directly off of Montgomery Village?
Yes, absolutely. There's, there's like a whole tier of signage that's outlined in the design guidelines that are like smaller, more discreet signs that are more wayfinding that'll say like garage this way. We do anticipate the garages will also maybe have some surface-mounted identification that you see in some of the renderings that has the big P, right, that tells people where to turn in. I do think that the team has done a really smart job of locating those parking entries. So maybe when you go through Block C, Victor, you could point out where those main entry points are.
And finally, Oden Hall and Lost Knife with the elimination of the sign there. I do believe we have an existing piece of public art that's looking for a home that might be a really good location, so I'm just going to put that out there.
Okay, we'll take that under advisement.
Right, that ends up like design guidelines to use that.
All right, go right ahead.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, so we're, we're going to pivot to Block C now and just get into some of the specifics of the layout, the topography, the access to Block C. So last meeting and this meeting, there's some good comments. So last meeting and this meeting, there's some good comments have been brought up about the functionality and the efficiency of Block C in particular. So we're just going to start. We've got the level-by-level cuts through the building, so it's a 3D axonometric view on the top and then a section cut from Montgomery Village Avenue to Street 2 on the bottom of it. So first, it's a very large block. It's a block that was set forth in the master plan. As Bob had opened up tonight, the master plan had some very specific requirements for each of the blocks, specific program, specific heights. So we believe we've done our best to work within those boundaries. The other thing that's really notable that we mentioned in the response letter is the topography on the site. So there's a 28-foot grade change from Montgomery Village Avenue to Street 2 south of that. That's a pretty considerable grade change and it makes it challenging on Lost Knife and Street 1 to get accessible entrances along that street. But what we've done in the section is try to take advantage of the topography and provide active entrances at different levels. So when you're working on a mixed-use block, you have all different times of day where you have peak parking usage and that's something that we actually could use the topography to our advantage, that residences don't have to use the same entrance as general shoppers or if someone were to come to Block B, this is generally where the signage and wayfinding would direct their parking to. Residents have their own separate demise parking within it and there's multiple vehicular as well as pedestrian entrances on the block. So some of the guidelines that were provided in the master plan said that if you're putting larger format retail on this block, you have to minimize its exposure to the outside, you have to provide vertically stacked integrated uses on top of each other and so that those two things in particular are really driving the locations of the large format and then having to vertically stack uses on top of them. So this is just a lower cut, for example, if I can grab the mouse just to walk you through that, and we'll show you how we're integrating all of that. So the lower level of the plan is at grade with Montgomery Village Avenue. And it's again 28 feet as you were to drive vertically up Street 1 and wrap around the block. The high point of the block is somewhere around here and it would be vertically rising as you come south on Lost Knife towards the block. So the gray denotes as if you're cutting flat on the lower level, then you're below grade by the time you're on the back of the site here. So what's that done? That's done is given us the ability to have in-and-out access for vehicles here. It's given us the ability to have street-facing employment or other uses along this level and it gives us the ability to have an entrance at this level or one level up in the parking. So we have both circulation access on three different levels in parking. We have 1, 2, and then 1 on the upper level that you see. And then we also have circulation within the garage, so we've had to pay very careful attention to the circulation. And you can see in the section, so the Montgomery Village Avenue is down here and Street 2 is up here. It's an entire, and this isn't your standard parking garage level, we've also paid careful attention on the floor-to-floor heights to give it a better environment, better atmosphere down there. So it's it's quite a tall floor-to-floor, both for the user experience as well as for vehicle and truck loading and trash to happen all within the building. So that's another important distinction that we've incorporated in the block is all of the loading and trash happens within the block. Usually, I'm sitting in front of council members like this, having to explain why it's okay to have a truck maneuvering and truck docks and how we've planned for the safety of the pedestrians, but I'm proud to say I'm finally working on a development where we've been able to commit to embedding that all within the blocks. So within the lower level, there is, it's designed to be two-way, but it's being programmed to be able to work functionally with one-way traffic that shares loading for the retail, the residential, additional retail, and it really does one loop on the lower level here for all of the trash and loading. Now, just going back one slide, there are these just 3D view angles that you can just see. So the view I'm about to click to is from this Street 1 in Montgomery Village Avenue. So as you can see, the topography starts to climb. We have to deal with certain terracing to make active storefronts and active frontage on here. This is a reference to that sign that we were just talking about, so not only will you have some of the larger format signs directing you with parking, make a right turn here, but as you go down the street, you know, this, these are just renderings that will actually get further detailed once the buildings are designed. All right, so now we're cut at the upper level, so we're now one level above, we're 28 feet above Montgomery Village Avenue. You've driven south on Street 1 to Street 2. So as you can see, the high point of the block is actually in the middle of the block. Now, what we've done is we've lined all of the parking and the retail. For the most part, there is some that is exposed with the residential and other uses. To your comment, Commissioner Hopkins, absolutely trying to eliminate dead-end corridors, trying to eliminate ups and downs. Like we've said a couple of times, these are conceptual blocking and stacking plans. These are demonstrating the fit of the different uses, the function, the program, the integration with the site, but there's a lot more design that has to happen on this project as we go forward. Same section down below. So now we are at the upper level. We are standing on, the next view you're going to see is basically standing on this level right here, looking at this. And the way it's been designed is that it gives the, it gives the look and feel as if it's outside in a public street. It's open to air. It is not closed by a garage above you. The garage actually is held back and the retail frontage is on the right side of the view with residential above. And we've done what we've, original plan had it, didn't have the residential wrapping completely, so it's now a continuous donut around to eliminate some of the dead-end corridors that existed in some of the ups and downs, so.
Stop right there for a second. I'm sorry to interrupt, but I just have to get my head wrapped around the vertical stacking here.
Yep.
The car in that rendering, how did it get there?
Gotcha, perfect. So you are driving on Street, there's a couple of ways you can get there. The simplest way is if I'm coming to this store or I'm a resident that lives in the residential above, I'm driving down Street 2 and I made a right turn into this garage. So you are at grade at this level and you made a right turn into this garage. One of these days I'll click the right button and you're coming from behind where you're standing in this view. So Street 2 is behind you in this view. And you can pull left into the garage. Residents have their own separate pull-in and you can completely circulate within the garage.
Got it. Thank you for that.
Got floor, you can fly right off. And there's also the circulation from down below, so you could have pulled into Street, you could have pulled off of Montgomery Avenue, you could have pulled off of Street 1 and there's circulation within. There's also separate circulation for residences. Also showing that, you know, again, the signage is obviously not designed, there's guidelines that limits the sizes and the locations. This could be set up just like a public street with inline retail or it's intended to be So this is a view a little bit further back. As Victor had said earlier, there's the east side of the block that has a donut residential building on top of the retail and also has retail that then lines it so you don't see the retail, you see residential and then connecting around, but these could be designed to be separate branded residential buildings. They don't have to all be one connected residence. There's, again, optionality is being planned into this. Now, just a bird's-eye view a little bit so you can see that, so you got the different residential components. The garage is in the middle, mostly embedded within the block. There's only a little bit of exposure of the residential. So Commissioner Bauer, this is just a better view, seeing you pull right off of that. So Montgomery Village Avenue is now 28 feet below and you're pulling in below on that level. So we've tried to do on as many fronts as possible, active uses, this is, you know, a skylight to below. This is, again, just a preliminary visual of something that could be there for getting light, excuse me, light down to retail below, showing, you know, future programming of residential buildings with potentially a rooftop pool, active courtyards for the residential. And even, it's just kind of cut off in the view, but we're trying to minimize the single loaded corridor just for efficiency sake and we're pulling back the garage from this entire bar that's just off of the screen there. So that's just walking through Block C, happy to answer questions or discuss.
Bill?
If I may, just trying to be proactive in bringing this to the forefront and in particular, Commissioner Hopkins, to your earlier comment about for Block C of having options in the bucket, if you will. And I did talk to Greg about, you know, is this something that we that we could do quickly without losing a lot of time in our process of processing of the schematic plan and Greg has advised me that that would not happen, it would slow down the process. So we are open to providing and looking at options from what limited amounts of knowledge that I have with architecture. Maybe those options would emerge with the further, more detailed design of the buildings itself. Perhaps at that point in time, if we were in the final site plan and other options become more viable, we would bring back an amendment to the SDP with those options, but we're open to suggestions, if any of you have them, as to how we could be more responsive to what you have suggested without without losing valuable time off the clock.
Phil, you got a question?
Yeah, I mean, I think I've got, I've got a couple. Looking at at what you guys have presented for Block C, I think the number one sort of question I have is to try and understand how the retail, how the large retail actually works. I spent a little bit of time, a lot of time going back and forth on the sections you submitted, trying to, you know, follow the bouncing ball for how you get from point A to point B. How is it, I'm assuming from what I saw, it's divided up and intended to be two large-format retail? Is it a single tenant? You know, I think that is my, that's the number one thing, is this greenhouse structure. What is the thought for how this actually functions? Loading, I get. Parking, I get. But, you know, what is, what is the, what is the visitor experience? How does this actually function? And tied to that, and I think this is, I usually try not to guess what Matt's thinking, but I think this is, this is the direction Commissioner Hopkins is going, like, we're looking at this development for hopefully 100 years. Who knows what retail's going to look like 25, 30, 40 years from now? In any other development, okay, a big box, one of the, any other big box, large-format retail in the city goes out of business, it's pretty straightforward to redevelop. You either tear it down or you subdivide it. You know, there are known solutions. You can't tear this down and redevelop the retail, so what is the Plan B? What is the, you know, the option? What's the fallback of how you would repurpose this into a different format in 30 years? So I think that's my two sort of starting questions. How do you actually function? How does this function? How do you get access to it?
Sure.
Go right ahead, please.
All good questions. So I've been working on developments like this around the US and around the world for a long time and I'll just kind of start by saying, I have never had the privilege of working on a project that's had as much retail interest this early in the game. I'm sure my client is tired of paying us for doing test fits and sketches and studies for all the tenants that keep coming along and so there's a heck of a lot of interest in these particular formatted retail tenants, both on the lower level and the upper level and the more traditional inline retail. So I could say now there is a ton of interest and it is very active. It's designed to be flexible, so it's not intended to be just one box. There are different-sized tenants that have expressed interest in this block that we've done many test fits. In fact, one of the tenants' architects is here to answer questions. If we were to get very technical, they're the best in the world at it. I don't think anyone has a crystal ball that says what could happen, you know, 100 years from now. The best we can do is design flexibility and, you know, I could walk you through the user experience for getting to both of the levels. And then, you know, let me, let me start with just the user experience, just to answer that question, if that's okay? So if I'm a customer, again, I could enter at any of the parking entrances. So there's three parking entrances on this block. That gives the ability for rush hour, for peak, for if there's an event, yet someone still wants to come shopping here, so if there's a lot of parking because of an event on Block B or somewhere else in the development. So providing three entrances gives a lot of user flexibility and optionality. Someone for their first time coming here, they're going to follow the signage and they're going to go directly to the easiest entrance. I know that's generally what I do when I go to a new development, I try to find the easiest, safest entrance. But people have been here over and over again, they're going to know that they could go around the block and come to this entrance. They're going to know that they could make a left turn here and then a right turn and come to a different entrance. So and then they're going to know that there is a parked ramp that connects you all the levels throughout the parking, that there's options. So if I'm going to shop in this store here, I'm going to, I could park somewhere here and then I have the ability to connect internally without having to leave to go to any of them. So if I'm coming to this store here or if this were broken up into more than one store, you simply pull in and just like you're searching for a parking space anywhere, you're just going to park in a garage. No different than a service lot, it just so happens that this is an elevated lot and we're intentionally designing this lower to level to have a much higher-than-normal floor-to-floor. Normally in garages, you'll have 9, 10, 11 feet floor-to-floor in a garage. This is being designed in excess of 14 feet for additional visibility, additional lighting, additional flexibility. That's the lower-level retail. Same with this retail.
Your front door to that retail, whether it's one tenant, two or five, is along that drive aisle.
That's correct. That's correct. And the back of house wraps around continuously for storage, equipment, loading, trash, all intentionally taken out of this customer experience zone. Similar in this smaller retail, this could be devised, demised up into one, could be devised up, demised up into multiple, there's drop-off areas, there's loading back here. There could be customer entrances on the backside, also providing pedestrian connections so that it's not, you're not just walking up a vehicle ramp, you're walking up a deliberately-designed entrance if you wanted to come out to the street to come across the Block B or if you were just going into the front door entrances on any of the retail that wraps wraps the Then the upper level isn't significantly different. You're pulling in again right off of the street. This is open to the sky above. This could be one retail, this could be multiple retails. There is the larger sea of parking here and you're parking right here or on a different level and then you're coming back and we would likely need to provide some sort of vertical pedestrian circulation at some point in the block.
I don't know why this just struck me, but, you know, it's interesting what you're proposing in a way that it's going to play out like nothing we've ever seen, where there's actually a covered Main Street-like storefront. It's almost like driving up the middle of the old mall, right? I mean, it's, it has to be that level of finish. It's not a, it's not a back door, it's not just a parking garage thing, it's actually a whole new kind of form, I think, for us to think about.
That's right, and, you know, our client Kevin, it's specifically, there was a long time when we first started designing this, he was sending us pictures of garages he was in, he was like, please don't make it look like this.
I think that's a long list, Montgomery Mall, to, you know, to some of the other locals that where they made that mistake and it's cost them customers.
Commissioner Bauer, it's exactly the way we've been referring to it internally as a design team. It's essentially an interior street that needs to be finished that way and we've already been thinking ahead to site plan and creating sort of openings and portals from the above street that you were looking at down into the lower level. Imagine openings.
You got me, it's cool. It's a really cool idea.
In this area here, so that the street to the lower-level retailer is directly below this one, so they have view up to the sky. So very much thinking of this as an internal city street with retail fronting it.
Yeah, likely multiple vertical cores, two or three.
Yes.
But it's a big block.
Yes.
But let me just, can I just say the reversal of what Phil said, which is exactly right, but I'm just going to say it opposite, that I think you've done a good job of solving a puzzle for two large-box retailers that stack on top of each other with a grade change. You know, whether that survives 30 or 50 years is really what we're worried about up here, right? And again, so I'm going to say really the same thing again, just slightly differently. My worry isn't that that, as a typology, if you just built that, I wouldn't sweat a bullet, right?
But the fact that we need to and demand it in the master plan is, you know, we've we've essentially zoned it to be vertically mixed use to a certain percentage, which I can't remember off the top of my head, 60% coverage or something like that.
It's like a, I've described it to the team as a wedding cake. So each tier has to cover at least 40% of the tier below.
Okay. And and there may be some wiggle room in that definition that, you know, we can encourage Greg to, you know, if there's a, if there's a good use on top of that garage pool, you know, outdoor space for the residential, that's clearly residential, maybe that counts too. But you've got way more than 40% now, clearly. And I think, I mean, it's a pretty good percentage, whatever it is. So you've gone a long way from that, from that first sketch to making it more efficient. But what I'm saying is that we're always going to have that use above, that residential use. And it should be the thing that's well designed and really appeals to the market. And the retail below needs to appeal to the market for sure. But if that if that bottom box sits empty or becomes storage or becomes, you know, future autonomous car storage, whatever whatever it ends up being in 50 years, that residential will always be there. So it needs to be the thing that's really well designed, very efficiently designed, affordably designed. This is not a neighborhood where we can build the tower that they built in Silver Spring that was the applicant's example. You know, I would love to see that, but it's not going to be supported in this neighborhood, right? We got to get that 85 foot type three construction, I get it. Let's really focus on that, on that residential. And and maybe we do or don't need more options. But I think that this massing, you know, these six pages do it for you. So if you can do these six pages, really three pages, do the axon and the three plans or four plans, really, if you need to get to the second level of residential in order to work out that box. I think there's really, there really are options there, subtle maybe, but it'll clear up the path when we get to final site plan and say, okay, we're going to go with B, we're going to go with C, we're going to do A. And we've taken all three to the market and we want to do whatever. And what I'm worried about, and to John's point, it, where that threshold is between pushing the guidelines for what we want to see in the final site plan and what in this final site plan is a little bit tough, right? So we want as much as we can get to make sure that we don't have to back up because that's that's a long process. So yeah, we're trying, I know, I get the, I get everybody's desperate to save a couple of weeks right now. I don't see how that's going to save you if you add a year to the process for block C.
It's a good conversation, just a couple of design questions. I'll have to defer to our client on the schedule question. But within the parameters set by the sketch plan, you can imagine we've looked at dozens and dozens and dozens of options here. And Jared articulated a couple of the, call it limiting factors that might further enhance the sort of efficiency of the way the residential is designed. So there are a few things that we have to find the synthesis in between. One, large format retail wants to be, it's our understanding, wrapped with residential. If more of that could be exposed, it, and you know this, it would reduce the amount of single loaded resi. It makes the resi function better. It is more marketable, et cetera. So if we could brand some of the retail on facing the streets, it could reduce some of the single loaded resi. Then there's the height cap.
Great trade off and and we need to hear from other people about whether that's acceptable or not.
You know, then there's the height cap, of course, which you mentioned. And then what hasn't been mentioned yet is just density. This block is about 1,000 feet long by 500 feet wide. And the amount of density programmed for it, we've used the phrase, there's only so much icing to ice the cake. And you can see that in this diagram. You can see that that yellow is just spread thinly to meet the requirements of building something on top of what's below, we're at about 50%. And something to ice the outside of the large format retail within a cap of certain resi units. And that multi-variable equation is tough to solve with different options without one of those things giving, if that makes sense.
It does, it makes great sense and it's probably a better way of saying what I'm trying to say. So if there's a compromise in there that gains us a great deal of efficiency, some better architecture, particularly at the corners and our public street, street one, whatever it is, let's see it. You know, let's see what that and let us make that compromise, right? As long as it fits within the master plan's, you know, constraints. And again, you're talking about a constraint that's nebulous, right? Lined, so, you know, concealed, that's a, that's a word that, it's not 100%, obviously. It's, what is it, is it 50%? Is it 80%? And what is, you know, if we're at 80% now and we've compromised our residential layout, even if it's at this point less, much less than it was. And we say, look, if we bring that down to 70%, we give a very efficient, you know, powerful, you know, architectural building that is residential that will be here for the next 100 years, then that's a great trade off. And I haven't seen it. And we know that the residential, to your point, is icing at this point. And and I just want to, I think there's probably a design solution there with a very similar retail base to it that is something that is more efficient and is going to have some compromises that we can then say yay or nay.
So are we hearing that in order to achieve optimal design, there could be variation in in those variables? How much of the retail is iced with residential? The density, meaning the cap on the quantity of residential and or the height? Those elements are flexible.
The cap will be harder because I think we did a, we did a fixed number, right? Is that true? Yes, we, the fixed numbers is, we can go back, obviously, if it's a great idea. I think we all reopen, you know, block C on the sketch plan, I'm assuming, and add density or whatever it is, if there's something to be benefited from, then, you know, let's talk about it. But I think you do have some hard caps and the number is one of them. So but the other ones are more nebulous, right?
Density, like number of units?
Line, you know, lined and covered by residential. So you have a percentage of coverage, which is not clearly defined. And then you have lined, which can mean a lot of different things.
I'm sorry, but the percent of of coverage is defined by ordinance. It's, we have to be at least 40% coverage of the layer below. I think it's quantitative.
Yeah. What are you now with this new design?
52, 53%.
Right. So that's quite a bit of square footage.
You might be, like you're talking about the, like giving relief on the amount of lining of blocking the large format versus.
We started discussing three constraints. Right, the number of units, that's clear, right? We gave a number in the in the sketch plan. The lining is not defined and coverage, I believe, is not entirely defined. I know we want to say that there's a, there's a massing box, but that massing box has architectural elements to go along with it out into the courtyard that we can start to discuss about whether that counts as coverage or not. But still you have 12%, which is actually, you know, 20% of the of the actual residential building that is, that is not needed to cover, you know, to meet that 40% schedule, right? So.
Well, you're bringing up all good points that we've been wrestling with for the last few years on this. Like Victor said, we've drawn, I don't know, maybe 15 different layouts at this point over the last few years. I think we're chomping at the bit to.
15?
Chomping at the bit to get to the next step so that we can actually further detail the plans. But, you know, we believe this is an efficient layout with the parameters that we have. You know, there's potential for relief on some of the parameters to make it a little bit more efficient. We've had a number of different developers look at this, some of our clients' partners look at this. So we believe it's efficient with the parameters that we have.
Yeah, and to be clear, just to, you know, give you a little handshake, give you a little pat on the back, this is tremendously better than that first. It's much more efficient and a much better building.
I just want to clarify one thing that you brought up. The coverage, 40% cap, that's actually not defined in ordinance as Victor's noted. It's actually a defined term that staff has worked on with the applicant to try to define vertical mixed use. It's an undefined term in our current zoning ordinance, but it is a requirement of the master plan. It is something we've cleaned up with retool, but that doesn't help us tonight, unfortunately. But we're working with the with the applicant and trying to understand what vertical mixed use could be and how it should be defined and how it meets the intent of the master plan was an exercise that both the applicant and the staff worked on together to come up with the definition that is currently in the design guidelines. So just wanted to clarify that one aspect of it.
Appreciate that. And in my developer brain, that gives you a lot of latitude, right? So that that 12%, 13% actually gives you a ton of latitude. But, you know, but if you wanted to add to that, if there was a great idea in there that allows you to say, look, I'm building a pool, I'm building decks, I'm building a residential environment, it is not the top of retail. It's not a retail roof, right? It's covering with a with a residential use, it's an outdoor residential use, but it's residential use. There may be room in there, I'm not speaking for staff, but there may be room in there to make those compromises if there's a win on the other end, you know?
Yeah, and I think once we get into detail unit layout and start to see layout all the corridors, like, you know, it's something we've, we struggle with when we were doing the calculations is we do have 13% roughly to play with, but we're not going to take a chunk out of this portion because now you're, you know, you're, you want to kind of keep that donut, keep that continuous circulation. So there isn't really an area to, even if we, even if we could drop down to the 40%, it doesn't really help us out unless we were to add levels on top or make it more dense.
Which I understand you can't do.
I think the design response is, you know, there can be other explorations. We'd have to defer to our client team on the schedule. As, you know, you all know, this this would take time to reopen and revisit though, all those dozens of options and seek new ones with more openness to varying perhaps some of the criteria that we were working towards, that's a time intensive effort.
And I think the suggestion or a question was brought up if some of these optionalities could be addressed in the design guidelines, which didn't necessarily, you know, require variations to be formatted onto the SDP sheets. Like perhaps that's something that we can investigate just to allow for future flexibility.
Greg, what do you think about adding a description for potential solutions?
It could be a solution, I'd be curious what that is. I have not seen anything, I would say along those lines yet.
Half aware, this guy, but.
A lot of the stuff is locked in at the SDP stages, like the height densities, things like that. So we'd have to be really clear on what the maximum height of the building would be.
Within the, that's easy, I think. They're not going to go beyond that buildable type three construction. So I think we got a height. I think it's really just how how many parts can we move around within block C? And if you're, if you're, you know, I know not tonight, but if you're comfortable with what, you know, Gensler's going to come up with in terms of an explanation of how we could move some of those parts and pieces around.
Again, we can look at it, again, I haven't seen anything, obviously, so it's hard for me to comment tonight on if that would be, in staff's opinion, meets what the council and the planning board is asking for.
Yeah, that's fair.
And Commissioner Hopkins, you've you've mentioned a couple of times, type three construction. I think I, I think I know where you're going with this, just the economics of doing any other type of construction, whether it's steel or concrete, that is often in question in development like this. We have explored other types of construction in this development just because of the economics of some of the retail that is driving some of this development. You know, this is potentially one of the first blocks to be developed because of the amount of interest in the retail, which is giving some buffer to options to consider for different construction types in the residential.
That'd be great. And again, you're making a better product, you're making a better product. So we're, again, our, we're, our focus is that, you know, 50 to 70 year sort of cycle of this building and we want it to really be successful. And I think that residential is the most important component of it.
That's right.
Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a great conversation. So I appreciate the depth at which we're getting into these issues. I want to circle back to something, Jerry, that you said about pedestrian connections. Because one of the things that's worried me about this block and the the positioning of the large format is its proximity to the Lake District and the ability of people to come to whatever those large format retailers end up being and then going to a restaurant. It's, you know, separated by a large parking garage at this point. It's a good amount of space. One of our more successful developments in the city is Rio, but they struggle with this very thing with Kohl's at the far end of the development. And it really has not seen where people park at the far end of Kohl's, shop at Kohl's and then continue into the rest of the the experience of being at Rio. So have you considered how somebody comes to one of these large format? What is that, you know, visitor journey going to be? How are they going to, you know, drive in, park, go to this? What is the incentive for them to then, you know, walk around? Are they going to have to go all the way down to street two and around? Or are there going to be ways to cut through? Could you talk a little bit about that?
Sure. It's an excellent question and I've been to Rio many, many times, so I know exactly what you're talking about. Sometimes you make the mistake of parking on one end and you don't, you didn't realize how far from the Mexican restaurant you actually have to walk. So we've paid careful attention to that. It's very important that part of it is the whole design, part of it is tied into the placemaking, the direction and the signage and wayfinding, directing people to the garage so that they can safely get out of their car and walk. Now, you could imagine whether it's a casual shopper, again, those visiting from out of town will highly likely use two of the easiest and most accessible entrances off of Montgomery Village Avenue and Street Two. The intent with that is that they don't have to drive around the development and do multiple laps around the block in order to find, find a parking garage. So once you're in there, again, it's, you know, you, we're kind of describing what is going to be designed in the future with deliberately having taller floor to floors on the garage levels, the multiple entrances and in particular, a pedestrian entrance. You see this kind of wide strip here. This is intentionally designed as an adjacent pedestrian focused entrance, not just as if someone is walking up an entrance ramp or a side entrance to a building. So the signage and wayfinding within the parking garage is going to direct users to the outside where they can cross to get to block B. So if there's, someone's parking their car here, they could shop in the shopping and they could easily walk through the pedestrian entrance to if there's a farmer's market going on or a movie night or they're going out to dinner at night. So the goal is that users are depositing their car here and that they don't, it just wouldn't be practical for someone to have to get in their car again and then try to find, you know, parking on the adjacent block.
And if I can add to that, just amplify what Jared is saying in this particular rendering. You know, we have shown, this is just a symbol to show that's where parking is. That's directly across on axes from the Paseo on block B. And so the parking sequence that's thought of, as you know, block B has, we call some teaser spots. Perhaps that's where the handicap places are, perhaps that's grab and go. But there is not parking on block B that's anywhere near adequate for those functions. That capacity is included in the block C parking. So the assumption is, our client has said, if somebody drives by a block B restaurant and they can't find where to park, they're going to go home. So it's very important to them that the parking is intuitive. So directly on axes with block B is this particular opening. You can drive into there and go up or down and the capacity for block B is actually in block C. So once somebody parks in there, which is the expected parking for block B, now they're seeing the large format retailers to their east and they might be going to block B. So they're actually parking directly in betwixt block B and those large format retailers.
So with all of the parking having to be in block C for block B, are you anticipating a larger, maybe elevated crosswalk? Thinking about what Rockville Town Center has done because they have a similar situation where you've got a cross traffic from their parking garages. The thing that I worry about, and that's why I was asking about where people are going to be coming in off of Montgomery Village, is because that is right up against the Paseo, if you're having ideally lots of cars coming in and lots of people walking, it does create conflict points. So, you know, whatever can be done to minimize risks to that, that cross traffic is going to be really important to the success of, you know, if people don't feel safe doing it, they're not going to do it.
Yeah, right. And I'd like to invite Gary, if you, Gary has been working closely on the design of that intersection. See if he has any further commentary on the crossing.
Since I was invited.
Gary, make sure you speak like right to that mic.
Right, right into this mic, so. The, we've had a lot of discussions with staff with Public Works on that intersection at street one and the cross between the Paseo from B to C. And right now it is a four way stop and we've gone back and forth on turn lanes and so forth with the dedicated wider crosswalk. We've talked with the traffic group if there is some more, I call them mechanical or lighting solutions for the signage and to control the cars so that the pedestrians have the free crossing. And so we're open to continuing that discussion on how to make that work. Because that intersection has to work for pedestrians, for cars, and it's key for getting from one side to the other. Because as Victor said, if you could park by the large format retailer, you know, stock up, then walk across the street to go have lunch and that would be the perfect day there to, and walk, you know, go have an ice cream, et cetera. So we will make sure that works. The other thing is, we also have a four way stop sign at the intersection of street one and street two. Because that's the other option is to take people. Because that's the other option is to take people to get to that street to travel east and west, uh, which, again, different shops, different routes to, uh, get from, you know, point to point.
Thank you.
Bill? Yeah, just a contextual question. When you were speaking with Commissioner Hopkins, you talked about, I call it the triple constraint in the designing the optionalities. Can you better explain like, how does the unit cap constrain you? And if there was flexibility there, what additional options could you come up with?
Okay, so I went to this, uh, sort of overall to, to help answer that question. There can be efficiency realized in this particular piece in a couple of ways. You can see to achieve, um, the percent cap, there are two stories, in some cases three, that cap that retailer. If height was not a constraint, one could, um, do less of that donut or make it smaller and go taller. The, there's an efficiency to be had there. Or if there were more units of density, the more sort of double loaded units that we can get efficiently will help offset some of the inefficiency and frankly, opportunity cost of the single loaded liner. So quantity of units and height. And then we were talking about the amount of wrapping of the retail. Now, it's, it's expressed here facing the garage. So it is concealed primarily towards Montgomery Village Ave and entirely against Lost Knife. So there are areas to pull away from that. There isn't a, that's not a lot of units, you know, to sort of peel away from those two faces to put on top of the, the building. Does that help?
It does. Maybe a follow-up on that, which is, how many more units would be, and not to hold you to them here, but it's that a hundred more, fifty more, ten thousand more? What, what sort of scale or range are you talking about?
We'd be in trouble answering that here.
Well, I think, but, but seriously, if height were a secret to the success here, I think that's something we should open the discussion about. If, if that were to make a difference in either efficiency or effectiveness in the way the building was is working.
Well, yeah, just going, going from my gut, unfortunately, you kind of need both. Because you, you could only take so many of those liner units and put it on top. Because Commissioner Hopkins would probably understand is, you don't want to just build a partial floor or a small floor. You bring extra stairs, extra elevators. So the, putting an entire additional ring or an entire additional L shape on top. So they kind of go hand in hand, unit count and height.
And then just thinking about market demand, right? Like, are there eight hundred people who want to move in tomorrow, right? So you also have to think about what the chunking of these construction pieces are going to be to be realistic.
It would certainly give more options to have the ability to add height and density for future study, but.
It, it does continue to add context to the notion of time. While we're looking at colored blocks here, there are fairly detailed construction cost models, um, that are based on a code analysis of construction type and cost for this particular project. So it, it is not to diminish any of these other studies if some of these variables can flex. But there's a lot of data that is embedded in what you have in front of you that is going to take time to unpack that I know is a concern for our client.
Mr. Mayor, I have a kind of a quick time check question for you. Just to get it on the table. If you want to reserve time for the public and also we have other districts and neighborhoods to talk about, I'm not sure we'll solve all of them all tonight. So I'll defer to you if you want to move it along to the next neighborhood or. I think that's a good idea. Let's move, let's, I, I think the, the questions have been adequately asked at this point. Let's move on with the presentation and then we'll get to the public.
Yeah, just to recap, if you keep the score where we are, we, we've, we've, we've got phasing and interim uses, which we think could be relatively quick. Gap housing, the block ENF alternative layouts and, um, alternative uses and then, and just a quick parking update. So we think some of these could go very quickly.
Great.
So, you know, just kind of recapping block C, I, I think the way we left it is, uh, we could work with staff to understand what some of the future optionality is that we can build into the guidelines and, uh, potentially conditions. Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, interim uses, we, we've got pretty detailed, uh, phasing plans, which Gary and team has created. We don't especially want, need, need to go into them in great detail unless you want to. Uh, I think the question that was raised was a concern about what will the interim look like? You're obviously can't physically build all of this at once. It's going to take certain times. So are you going to demolish half the mall? I'm kind of paraphrasing what we thought we heard. Are you going to demolish half the mall and have kind of half the blacktop for the parking lots remaining? So, uh, if we're understanding the question correctly, the answer, uh, is no, the, the mall will be demolished all at once. The parking and asphalt will be removed all at once. The WRS is committed to building the streets, uh, all at once in the first phase. Uh, and they're committed to interim uses, uh, on the blocks that are not being developed, uh, uh, in the, in, at the current moment. So interim uses, obviously, you know, just grass fields, um, dog parks, farmer's markets, uh, temporary uses, pop abuses, you know, movie night, you know, things that kind of complement the things that will be active and built, uh, on block B. So I, I think that's a pretty big community enhancement and commitment.
You said something wrong. The attorney just got up.
I could feel his presence.
I know that the DRRAs not before you tonight, but I just want to make it clear that everything that he just said is dependent upon us having a DRRA. That's what makes all that possible.
I have a quick question about, so one small element of the phasing. It looks from the, from the map that I see that the block that currently has the transit center is getting developed before the new transit center would go in. Is that really the intent at this point? I think we need to have a new one before, before we make the old one go away. Hi, Gary.
That was, question was over my head. It's bringing the expert.
I'll just sneak up here, so. We are, we've had good discussions and continue to work with the county on the timing of transit station. And so right now where it stands is they're looking to fund the new transit station spring of next year twenty-five to get that in the CIP. That's their goal right now. So that, that's positive. The existing transit station on the corner of Odin Hall and Lost Knife, that's going to stay operational, but operational from, uh, the road itself from Lost Knife as a bus stop. The parking, the mall parking that's there, we were look to transition that and get rid of that as soon as we can move the development forward. So there is a interim bus station and, and phasing plan with the old transit station and the new transit station also. And so we're continuing to work with, uh, the county and with DOT and we have an upcoming meeting in a couple of weeks with them to continue the conversation. City staff will be part of that meeting, uh, to continue that exact, you know, discussion and, and how it works.
All right, look forward to that.
And, and the goal is to maintain, I'll call it, the bus stop at Lost Knife versus the new, more elaborate station over on, on Russell.
Okay, thank you.
I did want to just, uh, just make it clear that, uh, a lot of what has occurred over there over time has occurred without any permission to have happened. We're going to work with the county to make sure that we can cooperate with them and give them what they need. There is an easement area that's created along Lost Knife Road and that's what we're talking to them about is, is putting a lot of the functions, all of the functions within that area. But the, the parking that is provided currently, when we take down the entire mall and take out all the pavement, that parking's going to go as well.
Any other questions or comments on phasing? Go right ahead.
All right.
Thank you. So we did signage, so we'll skip that.
Okay, I'm going to invite Gary again. Because gap housing is our next, um, focused topic.
All right, can I just stay up here now? So, um, gap housing. So we've been working with staff. We heard the city. We have introduced a, um, a third gap type, which is a triplex. Uh, we've introduced fifty-four units, which is about twelve and a half or twelve percent of the gap number. And then the graphic shows the specific, uh, sticks or blocks that were proposing those fifty-four units. So we have introduced that and then, um, I can explain it more or any questions on, on that type of housing.
I just want to say thank you for hearing the, the comment and integrating it into the plan. From my perspective, I think, I think it looks great and I think it adds something of, uh, of, of value, something that, that, um, complies and with the spirit and the, the letter of our master plan. So I want to say thanks for that. Any other?
No, just Councilmember Henderson is in here, but she's often a big advocate of this. So if she was here, I think she would express her appreciation as the mayor did as well.
Agree.
As do I.
My only question, um, somebody pointed this out to me when we were originally looking at this, uh, plan. Just the way that they're oriented in the, the, um, in the drawing is just making, you know, are we looking at having them the front of the building facing out towards Odin Hall and Russell, or is that actually the back?
It, it's the front. So all the fronts face out to Odin Hall and everything, the garages are off the alley. So it's the same typology where the fronts face out, um, to the green space, the streets. And then all the garages, similar like the two over twos or the one and a half over the one and a half. The garages are all off, off the alley. And we'll have floor plans and more information in the SDP as we resubmit it.
Great. Thank you. All right, next topic.
Gary, you should just stay up there. Okay, a- as promised, um, we've got some updates on blocks ENF. To recap the concerns that we heard last time, um, they did also pair with blocks G and H, which are to the south off of this image. As the SDP has been submitted, blocks G and H include, um, three condominium buildings, um, six stories tall, single level of parking with five levels above. On those particular bro- blocks, a concern was expressed that, um, while grade does help conceal some of the parking, that having the parking as the base of, of the building was undesirable. The other comment that was raised was the gap housing that as drawn, um, had been proposed lining the east and west sides of Street Five. From the blocks to the south connect here, connecting up to block B to the north. So in order to address those two comments simultaneously, what is being proposed is to relocate gap housing, um, two blocks, um, G and H as shown here. Um, there are three type, four types of gap housing shown there that pairs better with some of the other three and four story residential in that neighborhood. Then to take the condominium buildings that had been on these blocks, there were three of them. We are matching the unit type but consolidating into two and locating them in these L-shaped blocks flanking, um, Street Five. These buildings are footprints in plan at this time, um, but in consultation with our team, we would include language in the design guidelines that requires that there be active people space lining, um, lining Street Five. And that any parking that is at the base of that building be buffered from Street Five by, um, other programs. So this is the, I know there are other questions on blocks ENF, but this is the proposal to address both of those questions, um, simultaneously.
Yeah, we thought that introducing the condominium buildings was a better medium density transition rather than having the lower density buildings on Street Five. So this is a better transition to block B, which is the public use.
Jim? Jim, go ahead.
So, I don't know if, i- i- I agree that this is probably a better solution than, than the gap housing that was there. I do still feel like it's creating canyons. It's, it's, you know, doesn't feel very integral. I'm, I'm just trying to visualize that, you know, going up. How many stories are we anticipating these? Six?
Six. The, while these are the same in plan, they're not the same on of units. So it could be that one is six and one is five or four.
You know, I go back to, of course, you know, what you mentioned about possibly shifting over the green space on, uh, block D. You know, is, is a good solution to what my concerns were about that. As far as the space over here on, between F and E. I think, you know, making sure that that is, you know, you think about people walking up from the neighborhood, right, and, and coming up from there and making sure that that is, you know, uh, I don't know if there'd be activation necessarily, um, with condo buildings, but, I don't know. I'm, I'm lukewarm on it, but I, I, I appreciate the effort to hear the, the comments about not wanting to overlook that. So, you know, i- i- it is an improvement. Whether it's the right solution, I, I don't know at this point. And I definitely would, um, welcome the comments from the, the planning commission about it.
Gentlemen.
Toss, toss the hot potato.
I, I mean, I think this is going to be a, is it the dog or the tail, right? I mean, I think, I think at some point we really have to understand what sort of form and impact the transit center itself is going to have and, and inform how that ripples out from in, into what these buildings look like. I mean, it could be that instead of being two Ls that look like this, they're, they're reversed and they have a big courtyard area in the middle. I don't know. I mean, it's, it's hard to know. But I think what needs to inform it is a little bit more understanding of how the transit center integrates into this, this block. And I don't know when we'll know that. Do we know how, how that's going to play out?
I can, I can just speak to the, to the coordination discussions we've had, which again, go back many months. We have evaluated multiple studies and options from Montgomery County for the transit center. We had pushed them simply to establish a provisional property line, if you will, so that our team understood what it was that we could mass and program. And what the SDP includes is Montgomery County's largest study at the time, meaning option that took the largest area. And WRS concurred that we would strike a line at the largest area that they would request at that time. And given that, that process, um, it might be on its own track. We then programmed, you can see it here, we then programmed and designed on the east side of that line. So I think Gary knows better, um, but I'm not sure that would be known in time for the SDP, perhaps at the point that this blocks get developed, that that will be much more defined and could certainly be folded in at, at that time. But it's my understanding that the county will not have a design ready, um, during this SDP process.
It sounds like, it sounds realistic to me.
Yeah, that's fair. I mean, but, but is there, is there a scenario where you don't even need the street between them? I mean, that, that seems like by bifurcating those two buildings, it only, it's only that way because that street happened to be there in the earlier plan.
Well, I guess from an urban planning perspective, that's, that street serves a few functions. It ties into the, like district blocks. So there's a direct connection there. And I think that's an improvement that we made in this plan over the, the master plan, the realignment of that. It also helps break down the block size to, and to encourage walkability on a sidewalk surface that isn't necessarily something that would be perceived as an interior courtyard space.
Sorry, Caroline, I, I just brought this up because it, it's a broader connection to the site.
Because I think what you're suggesting is getting rid of Street Five and basically using the bulk of that block to reconfigure the residential units. Is that correct?
Well, it may not be a vehicular street. It might be a, you know, pedestrian type street, or it might be, you know, access to the parking for those condo buildings happen off of the two east-west legs and the, the middle part becomes very people, very much a people oriented space. It, it just, I just sort of, I'm asking the question is that, you know, once you begin to get into this and figure out what the edges are doing for the transit, for the residual space for housing, whether that really needs to look like, be so dominated by cars. That's, that's kind of where I'm headed.
I think a simplistic answer is the Street Five has been part of the sketch plan, which our understanding wa- um, was inflexible. I mean, I don't know if that's understanding is correct or not, but it's in the sketch plan and we took that as sacred.
If you answered the question that by developing the multifamily here, the condo buildings in a way that was really excellent for the, for the street level people environment and it, and it meant taking out the vehicular traffic, that isn't a hard hurdle, frankly.
Greg, do you want to come clarify that?
Yeah, I'll just clarify. The sketch plan does show multiple blocks as it's laid out and the plan does follow those blocks, but my understanding, the sketch plan doesn't dictate that it has to be a vehicular road. It could be a pedestrian Paseo or something along those lines and could still could be consistent with the sketch plan in my opinion.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can I do a follow-up? So going back to what I had proffered earlier about rotating.
Can I do a follow-up? So, going back to what I had proffered earlier about rotating that building, and, and, you know, changing the, the longer block and, and making six the, the extension. So, basically, F would be a little bit larger, E might be a little bit smaller. Um, the advantage that that ends up giving is that it, you don't have like this double stack here, right? You end up having at least one, um, where you have views of your clubhouse and, and the, the green space there. Um, is there any, you know, obviously, it, that creates a lot of dominoes, but, you know, we really didn't dive into that possibility there. In, in looking at these, at this alternative, is there a world where, you know, to the commissioner's point, that maybe Street Five doesn't continue through there, that maybe this is over, you know, just thinking about, again, that massing, um, and then having other options now closer to this extended, um, linear park that you're considering in, in Block D?
So, what I'm hearing is that while Street Five is established in the sketch plan, it is not required to be vehicular, um, we had ne- we would have never contemplated extending Street Six through, back to my earlier comment, and please correct us, that the street network as defined in the sketch plan and approved was, was locked in. And so, that's just an honest answer. We would not have looked at extending Street Six, because we thought that was, changing streets was a no-fly zone, as we understood it.
Well, and we're, we're also trying to just think of some urban best practices for urban planning, and signage and wayfinding, and just continuity of a grid. You know, cities that have grids, you know, have a lot of intuitive, just pedestrian circulation and vehicle circulation. You know, I think acknowledging that, um, we are in a world for a long time that will be vehicle-dominated, and we still have to plan for vehicles, you know. I, I think having the option of a consideration of the future, that maybe that street doesn't entertain vehicles, I think it's pretty important to keep that as just a smaller loop within the blocks. Uh, and it also continues through where Street Six is much, is a, is a much, much, I'll call it a, 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 a minor street, where Street Five is a pretty important street within the block. As you can see, it continues all the way through, uh, Block B. So, I think there's, there's some interest in the future of it not being a vehi- vehicle street, having that option, but I, I, I think it's just important for just general circulation. If someone is visiting a friend or coming shopping, having them to have to then loop all the way out to Russell Avenue, which is a much more major street, and then double back, um, isn't something that we'd recommend.
And, and that's a fair answer. I mean, I think, I think the point of the comment is solve for what the current conditions are gonna be, which is now going to be multifamily, instead of the, the sticks of either, um, gap housing, whatever, whatever was there before, and know that the sketch plan doesn't, it, it isn't in a way that creates the exact geometry, it creates the, the implied connections and where, where the circulation should go. Then, then say, okay, this makes sense. That's where the road needs to be, and that's where the buildings need to be. But it, it isn't, it isn't a foregone conclusion that that makes sense, and that you're beginning to drift towards a different type of building or a different type of housing.
Understood. Yeah, and I, I think you've brought up excellent points about the design integration of the Transit Center. That's just something that I think will just, just has to be worked out in the future, uh, as there is more known. I, I, I could absolutely see in the future that it, it's just being designed hand-in-hand, and that's integrated within the building, or there's canopies that are part of the building, and...
Something, yeah.
Yeah. And, and even those sort of, that sort of like Vista diagram that, um, Victor showed at the beginning starts to hint at establishing a street wall where that Transit Center is, right? So, it doesn't just fade into the distance and, and sort of retreat. So, I, I think there are things we can do to make sure that that has a prominence without actually designing it.
Great. All right, I think the question's on the table, so feel free to move forward.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you. And I think we're up on our last topic, which Gary assured us would be a short topic.
Press, pressure's on. Um, so, let's talk about parking. Um, and I heard Lloyd had a question earlier with the Block B and the commercial parking, but I'll circle back to that. So, uh, we took a look at the block by block, and you see this, this colored, coded block by block, how we're doing that. Short answer is, we took a serious look at Oden Hall and how we can add parking to that. We've talked to staff, we've had a couple calls with Public Works, and the solution that's on the table right now is to leave Oden Hall as two lanes, but to add a lane of parallel parking adjacent to, uh, Blocks H, P, and O, which are the, the pink, the green, and the, uh, the blue on the, on the screen. And when we do that, we can, we can, we're almost there. I'll use Greg's term, "close," and all the blocks work, except for a couple. One in particular, N, is, which is on the, uh, it's the purple on Lost Knife. That's a little bit short, but when you go back to P, it's a little bit heavy. So, they, they do balance out, and we are, um, when we add everything up, we have an additional eighty-three spaces over and above the point five, uh, or the policy per block. So, I think we're there. We're adding forty-six spaces to Oden Hall, and, and plus or minus a space or two, as we work out the details with staff. But that, that's the, uh, solution we have right now, and I think, I think we're there making that, um, making that work.
This reminds me of the solution on, um, um, which is that it's Fields Road. Fields Road, as it runs by Crown, where it was converted from, well, went from a country road to a four-lane road, to now it's got parking on both sides. Um, did we learn anything from that? Have you guys been kind of opened up the discussion, frankly, about whether that's a good idea or not, based on that? And it's built, it's in, people are using it, so...
I, I think it is. I'll let staff comment on the application of Fields Road, but when you...
You don't have to answer to that. I'm just saying, if that's part of the discussion, a part of the research, that someone really looked hard at, whether that was a good idea based on now that it's in and people are using it, that's great. That, that would be a, a good way to validate this. Or, there are some issues that need to be resolved in the course of doing this one.
And, and how to make it work better, because I think what we are doing is, we're implementing the, the road code, we're giving the road a diet, and, and improving those pedestrian-friendly attributes with the...
Fair enough. I'm, I'm just asking, you really, take a hard look at Fields Road and see that there's nothing to be gained from that, or there is something to be gained from that, do it, right?
Yeah, there's bound to be a design element there somewhere that we need to learn from. But, um, but I'd love to advocate for the solution, and just say that, you know, not only, I was gonna be, do some traffic calming, which is good for s- speed demons like myself, but it's, it's also, uh, safer, obviously, more pedestrian-oriented, and buffers those homes with those parallel cars. So, I think it maybe solves, you know, our religion is, is alley-based townhomes, right? So, it's kind of Gaithersburg, it's, it's a starter, that's where we start. And then, uh, uh, that leaves you with some homes that face fairly, you know, dramatic roadways, and, uh, and a little bit of road diet, and some parallel parking can go a long way to buffering those homes. So, I, I'm a big advocate for this solution. I think it's great.
Jim, go ahead.
So, you mentioned implementing the road code. Is this going to add any kind of a shared-use path? Or, you mentioned the ability to traverse the entire...
Yeah, so it includes a ten-foot shared-use path along the frontage of Oden Hall, which is also Russell, Montgomery Village, and, uh, we're working with the county to make sure we can do that on Lost Knife also.
As somebody who rides their bike around here, that's wonderful.
Excellent.
That's, that's part of the, uh, program.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on this? Okay. And this, we're at the end of your presentation. All right, I want to open it up for the public.
There it is.
So, we, anybody who's in the room who'd like to testify, um, this is where we testify. This is our new podium. Um, we ask that you state your name and address, or if you feel more comfortable, your neighborhood. For the record, keep your comments, no more than three minutes. If you have more than three minutes' worth of material, feel free to use your three minutes and submit all the rest in writing. It'll be considered and made part of the record, just like oral testimony. Do we have anybody here who'd like to testify this evening? Come on up. Well, anybody who wants to testify, please just line up behind Pam. Come on up.
I'm looking forward to seeing your microphones. Let's see how these work. Okay. Um, Pam, place dead, and I'm from Sabre. Thank you very much for, uh, this opportunity. Um, just a couple comments when I was looking at some of the sketches and listening tonight, um, that, again, I'm just concerned, kind of like with what Councilmember Harris is saying, you know, there's not a space that's big enough for older kids to play in, and when you have that many people in that area, they may need an outlet. And, uh, parents may not feel great about letting them wander to the next big park or whatever, whether that's Kelly Park or some other place. Um, so, just a consideration for that. Um, also, the, uh, the housing over retail, um, I understand that there are some concerns about that. And I'm reading a book by a woman who is named Rosa Corey, and, uh, she was a forensic commercial real estate appraiser specializing in eminent domain valuation. She was from California. She had, uh, thirty years of experience analyzing land use and property values. So, um, she wrote in 2011 that, um, she said that your, she said that, um, no matter where you live, I'll bet that there have been hundreds of condos built or planned in the center of your town recently, over the last ten years. Again, reminding that, uh, this was written in 2011. There has been a planning revolution across the U.S. It was the implementa- implementation of growing smart. Your commercial, industrial, and multi-residential land was rezoned to mixed use. Microphone just died. Um, nearly everything that got approvals for a development was designed the same way. Ground-floor retail, ground-floor retail with two or three stories of residential above, mixed use. Very hard to finance for construction and very hard to manage, since it has to have a high density of people in order to justify the retail. A lot of is, a lot of it is empty, and most of the ground-floor retail is empty too, a high bankruptcy rate. So, again, I'm not an expert in this, but I'm telling you that this person who was an expert had those concerns. Um, and so, um, in terms of the empty retail, that reminds me of Diamond Avenue, that there were, uh, apartments or condos that were built along there, and that the design or the desire was to have retail along that strip. And I don't know of any store that I can even name that is along that, that area. Um, in terms of the housing over retail, what happens when the housing, you know, the occupants are too loud, or they are too destructive, and you've got plumbing leaks, and it, you know, goes and destroys your whole, uh, retail area? What happens to that? Um, and so, what happens, you know, like there are no balconies in the, you know, in these very expensive areas, even though they're supposed to be, you know, moderately priced when they're above retail? Who wants to buy expensive housing and hear trucks and a lot of stuff?
You're out of time, I'm sorry.
Hey, can you consider adding a shot clock or something? Oh, I see. I have three seconds.
It's there. It's there, sorry.
Thank you. Be great there. I'll come back.
I, that was the first testimony in this room, and I didn't have the beep turned on, so I apologize about that. Um, please, go right ahead.
Hi, yes, Susan Baker, and I live over near the festival at Muddy Branch on the other side of Two Seventy. Um, my biggest thing that was hitting me tonight, looking at the pictures of the buildings themselves, now I don't know if these are the final design ideas, but to me, it looks like a bunch of stacked shipping containers. And, you know, we're in this lovely Gaithersburg area, where we've got homey-looking, warm buildings. We've got Victorians, we've got nineteen-fifties. And a lot of the things being built in this area now look like they're supposed to be store buildings that have been repurposed for housing, warehouses and things like this. And it's like, you know, where, where are the Victorians? Where are the houses that say, "Welcome Home," that are neighborhoods? The, the feeling to me is very uncomfortable, very industrial, and, um, unneighborhooody, if you will. And looking at the, the street layout with that one, I don't know what's Streets Five or Six or whatever, you know, but the one that goes like this, if you're looking at the map, it goes like this. It looks like it divides the two, it divides everything into like these two big chunks. And I'm, I'm just looking at the way neighborhoods develop, and I got a minute and ten seconds, I'm gonna try to talk fast. Um, it just looks like it's, it, it, it looks like a division. It looks like you've got the wrong side of the tracks and the right side of the tracks. And the right side of the tracks is where the lake is, and the wrong side of the tracks is where the Transit Center currently is. And it's just, you can't, you, you can't legislate neighborhood, and you can't design neighborhood. It's the people. And if you don't have a place that people want to live and walk and invite their friends, who are gonna have to park somewhere, um, it's just very uncomfortable to me. Thank you. I hope you all had a wonderful Independence Day.
Thank you very much. And I want you to know, Susan, uh, I wasn't looking at my watch concerned about your time. I get alerts when Councilmember Wu is texting, and I, I want to see if he's trying to talk or not. Uh, so, that was not about you. I, I just want you to know.
I'm just teasing.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Raleigh Smith from Masbury, and our biggest concern, as you know, has been to make sure that our workers have housing there. I couldn't understand a lot of the conversation today. The mics weren't working back there or something like that. So, I don't know what was said about gap housing. I'll find out, and, and I will, uh, I hope talk to the staff about it. Uh, but I do want to say, get on with it. This is a wonderful, I thought it was a beautiful plan. I think a lot of stuff, I think it needs to happen here. I'm, of course, I was in California, I was in San Jose, I was in, uh, Fresno, a lot of work with that. I think it shows a lot of wonderful design, and it shows what urbanism, new urbanism is all about. And I'm, I'm really pleased to see this is gonna happen. Uh, I just hope we can really, and, uh, make sure that the, there is housing. I, I could, I'll read more about it and, and then get back to you on, on that, but know that that's our concern.
Thank you very much, Raleigh.
Can I, can I just answer one of the things you said, Mayor?
Yes, please.
Raleigh, if, if you do have questions, if you have questions, don't, uh, you can call staff. Feel free to, um, talk to Greg and, and ask him questions, you know, during the day or whatever.
Yeah, we do.
We do.
Okay.
Thank you. Do we have any other, uh, testimonies? Got a couple more.
Hi, um, my name is Benita Poole, and I live off of Strawberry Knoll. Um, I have three concerns. One is, um, I don't shop at any of the locations, like, uh, Rockville Town Center. There's another one further down, because the parking is so poor, and you have to walk everywhere and lug your packages around. So, I just stay away from those types of places. And, um, the second thing was, if there was crime at Lake Forest before, what will building a neighborhood do to change that? I mean, I know that sometimes, like, they ripped down Giant, um, you know, off a summit and built apartments, and I'm assuming it's better, but, um, I'm just wondering if it'll really make a difference. And my greatest concern is Montgomery Village Avenue. It should be like a ten-minute drive from my house to, to Seventy, and it can take twenty or twenty-five minutes now. And, um, if you, you cut out lanes, right turn lanes, and, um, I know, I'm gonna be driving through parking lots and stuff, because it just takes so long. It, I just, I can't imagine what it's gonna do to increase the traffic, um, and what it'll just do to the drivers who've already lived here. So, anyway, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, where's the clock? Oh, there it is. Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here. It's been, uh, three years since this place should have opened, so it's nice to finally have a meeting here.
Rub it in, rub it in.
Remember.
I do.
Uh, anyway, Mike Sesma, uh, West Riding. Uh, I'm here to talk about the, uh, features of the plan that I found distinctive and others that I found disappointing. I think the biggest disappointment is the lack of real diversity in the housing styles and types. Uh, one of the things noted by Commissioner Wessel was about, about the, what I'm gonna refer to as the panhandle of the Lake District, uh, which is, uh, at, uh, Three Fifty-Five and Montgomery Village Avenue. It's nice to have a park there, but, uh, remember where all the people who might be pedestrians to take advantage of a green space like that, they're all coming from the south and the east, part, partly from this development, but they have to cross four lanes of traffic to get there. So, I'm not sure that's gonna be the attraction that it's, I mean, it's nicely designed, but I'm not sure it's gonna be the attraction that's, that's gonna be affected. One of the things about, uh, housing that, uh, when we're talking, when you were talking about Block C, the, the notion of increasing the density and the height would provide an opportunity... Block C, the notion of increasing the density and the height would provide an opportunity to move some of those sticks of townhouses or whatever and create more green space, maybe large enough for a small soccer field or a field, and provide a real center that would actually bring these neighborhoods together rather than, I mean, we really have like four separate neighborhoods that, that aren't really linked by much. We talk about them being, you talk about them being linked, providing pedestrian linkages, but there's nothing that I think motivates people to come together to a center of this region. And, you know, I think the plan has done a good job of placemaking, but, you know, the placemaking is mostly around the Lake District where that retail is gonna be, where the restaurants are gonna be. It's far away from the, the neighborhood that aligns Odin Hall and the neighborhood that aligns Lost Knife, the south and the east. So, you know, I'd like to see more development, more ideas about how you create the synergy between all of the neighborhoods and linking them better. So I don't know where to do that, whether it's between Street One and, and Street Two, making that intersection a major element, a larger plaza, a big landmark. But the other thing to remember, and I think whether it's Rio, whether it's Crown, whether it's Kentlands, the density in those places has worked to some extent, but the retail still must draw on the, the area around, you know, greater Gaithersburg. People come for, for some distances to go to those places. So parking remains an issue and I'm still not confident that the parking along Lost Knife and Odin Hall is gonna be adequate there. So, you know, I think there are other issues that people brought up about traffic and everything else, so thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thanks, Mike. Do we have any other testimonies in the room? Okay, not seeing any right now. On Zoom, if there's anybody on Zoom who'd like to testify, use the raise hand function and I will call on you. I'm not seeing any.
That's shocking.
Yeah, okay. Not seeing any, okay. So I wanted to give the applicant a chance to talk about, to respond to anything that they would like to respond to from the, that we just heard from the public. It's, it's, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, you can respond in writing later if you want, but if you want to respond right now, think the questions were viability, about concerns about the architecture, anything you have to say about crime or traffic impacts on Montgomery Village Avenue and about, more about linking, although you have talked quite a bit about that and there, there were questions on the table about that already. So if there's any of those that you would like to speak about, please.
Yeah, I could jump in on a few, just kind of reiterating, reiterating some of the things we had said earlier is that, you know, one, the linking from north to south. I think it was a good discussion last time, good discussion this time. It's a really big site. Those are bigger open spaces than, than they appear on that tiny, tiny scaled plan there. But in the next phase, there, there will be detailed plans of what's happening in the open space and all of the different placemaking opportunities that we could implement to link the site together. That's kind of one thing that will come in the, in the future submissions. And then to answer the question about the architecture, you know, these are conceptual images that are not the final architecture, you know, we could say that with confidence. These are demonstrating how the guidelines could be implemented, but there will be a lot more opportunities with the staff and, and council members and planning commissioners to see the future architecture as it develops.
Jim, then Jamil.
So I just wanted...
And then Neil.
I want to follow up on what former Councilmember Sesma just brought up about the opportunity that we have at the intersection of Street One and Street Two, particularly with the extension of the green space. And I think that, you know, highlighting that opportunity for some sort of central square, something that is a gathering point for, you know, that central piece that can pull in the employment, that can pull in the housing, that can pull in the, the entertainment, you know, with your planning to extend that into Block D, that creates some opportunities. And the discussion we have of what might get judged in Block E, technical term, right? You know, there is an opportunity there, you know. So I know you have great designers and I think, you know, just seizing on that comment, I think is a, I'm excited about what you can do to respond to that because I think there's a really cool option there.
And maybe I could just start if you don't mind going to the enlargement of that neighborhood at the intersection of Streets One and Two. Yeah, thanks. I think that's an interesting comment that you've made and definitely when we open up the connectivity on Block D, it opens, opens some possibilities there. I think what we, we need to be careful to balance is the amount of sort of internal framed space and external space to make sure that there's a combination and sort of like a dialogue between both of them and that both of them are meaningful, but I think that's definitely something that we could look at at that corner.
Are we still in, in dialogue mode, we can ask questions?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sure.
I love some thoughts from, from all of you about this question we're talking about right now. We've called Street One and Street Two Main and Main. Perhaps it is the most significant intersection in the development. The approach that has been taken, for better or worse, is to actually frame that corner, bring buildings up to it, and furthermore, we are adding to the design guidelines that there should be some architectural verticality to really capture and create an exclamation point at that corner. So for better or worse, it's the opposite of, of sort of backing away and creating plaza. It is a sound urban design principle to really capture Main and Main with building edges and corners. What we would suggest, back to the enhancement of Street One as a more robust sort of boulevard open space, to us, that linear accentuation, broadening that, more outdoor space and buffer off of that, might be a strategy that helps link the development north to south, perhaps picks up on some of the openness that, that is being discussed. But I'm, I guess I'm making a bit of a case, but would like comments for keeping the Main and Main intersection as an intersection of buildings with sort of a vertical element that really frames that space as an intersection. Thoughts?
So was that, that was a question?
It was.
The question was, do we want to see it, do we want to see the buildings right up to the line or do we want to, we want to back off the buildings off?
Yes.
I can offer thoughts.
Please, please do.
I think, I think you're right and I'm gonna give an alternative opinion to my commissioner or to my council member friend to just say that I think E wants to be that big block, right? And so I think there's some efficiency there. I think it's a very buildable block. It'll go early. It's a, it's a nice buildable block. Shrinking it a little bit worries me. But to that point, I really like your A Towers at that corner. I think that's a great wall. I think as big as, as E is now, I think that's right. To give it a little heft, it's really D that, that we were talking about, sort of continuing that up, and I don't know that it's a huge move. I think you can still get your architectural element there with a fifteen-foot pushback and a nice passeo, you know, that goes through there. You can, you can, you know, there's all kinds of things you can do in fifteen and twenty feet, twenty-five feet, you know, leave it to you guys to figure that out. But I think you still get your street wall with a really nice lazy pedestrian path that has some substantial buildings on either side. So, and it differentiates itself tremendously, obviously, from Street Five, which really wants to be a pedestrian alley, you know, used kind of building. And that one is strained, it is, it is a cavern, you know, it's eighty-five up, sixty-five across, you know, that one-to-one ratio we all depend on to not be a cavern, we're breaking that, right? So as soon as you've broken that, there's something that has to be done to make up for that and I don't know what it is, so.
But Councilmember McNulty, I want to make, we're validating the sort of notion of, of open space and connectivity, but I think the case that we're making is the discussion we had about linearly improving Street One as that open space, because not only do you capture the open space, but you create, as Commissioner Bauer said, you're celebrating a major linkage that perhaps isn't being done as successfully now. So I'm hoping we can capture the open space comment, but all, but do it by accentuating Street One.
Yeah, I think you have to pick the scheme. I mean, neither one is right or wrong. It's like which one makes the most sense for the larger scheme and then do it up. I mean, really celebrate it, really do it right. To do a town square at Main and Main is a brilliant idea, it's beautiful, it can be a wonderful space. The problem is it would have to be pretty big to be successful in, in this, this plan. It's not a, it's not a traffic circle, right? I mean, it would be, there should be some substantial dimension to it and rethinking of how the street grid works. Could be a great solution. That's not how you came in here. You came in here with more of a linear thing. So that's, I'm sensing that's where you want to go with this, so that'll do that up, make that great, make that a real star of the plan. And if, you know, once you picture your strategy, I'm just asking you that you amplify it. So if, if you go back and think about doing a big town square, great, but, but don't make it just a gesture that's a little bitty thing in the middle of the plan, make it something that's really enjoyable and a place that, that could be a real center and anchor for the, for the community.
If I may, just to answer your question, if, if the extension of the, the linear park is what ends up happening and you stick with the, the, I forget the, the term you used, Matt, but keeping that wall there, you know, being able to just push back whatever you're gonna have and make sure that what is at the other end of the, the linear park that's, that becomes that, that setback.
Yes.
You know, I think you have that opportunity. It just gives you more, more air to really appreciate that, you know, that architecture, whatever that's gonna be.
Exactly right, yeah.
Understood. That's been a great takeaway, I think, from our discussion this evening. Thank you.
Jamil.
Question and a comment. On page six of the response memo, there's a paragraph that describes or states something to the effect of there are seventy-five thousand individual large format stores that fall directly into the categories. Is there a site for that and what do you define? What is a large format store? Is that greater than a hundred thousand square feet, greater than fifty? So just some context. And is it seventy-five Walmarts or seventy-five thousand of a variety of categories? What's that makeup like?
I think I'll have to invite one of our colleagues and panelists to address that question.
Yeah, Gensler didn't write, that was, that was from Bob Dalrymple, I believe.
It's, it's in the memo and it's in a few of the exhibits, but I couldn't, and if there's a site anywhere in the packet, let me know, I could, I could find it.
Yeah, I'm told that the, that the cutoff is thirty thousand square foot is, is the cutoff for large format retail.
Okay, so there's seventy-five thousand, thirty thousand square foot or higher, and then what is the makeup of the seventy-five thousand? Like how many different types?
As I understand it, there's just, if it's, just two, I'm told.
And then just, thank you. Thank you very much for clarification. And just maybe a comment, I think we learned tonight or we heard tonight, to the extent there's artificially burdensome constraints that are stopping you from making this the best it could be and the best version of it could be in terms of the street, unit caps, heights, other components from this catch clam. To the extent we have flexibility, let's explore that and see, you know, and get this to be the best it can be.
Thank you, Jamil. Go to Neil.
All right. It's a tough, tough to, on the one hand, we want to make this one, totally wonderful and, you know, honestly, the plan is already terrific, okay? I want to hand it to the designers and the applicant. And there's all, there's room for improvement. I would like to figure out when the bulldozers come out so we can move forward with this, but, and I'm sure the developer would like to, like to know that as well. So we, we've got to figure out how to get there and, because we can go round and round on this for a long time. I want to make a few, I'm gonna go out of the box a little bit and I know I hate when some of my colleagues do this, but I'm gonna do it anyway. There's a few things that I think we can do outside of what you guys need to do. Looking at the map of the city, I understand with a hundred thou, with a, with a, with a, a property this size, building a ball field or something like that is not really practical. The closest city parks are Blum Park and, and the, and Bora Park, and neither of them are particularly close. They're reasonably close, but I think I'm gonna throw this out to the city to think about where, where we're gonna find another park so that, because our goal has always been to have a park within a quarter mile of any residents, and I don't think, looking at the map, that we're there at this point. So we have some work to do. Also, the reason I asked about the Transit Center, I was curious about it and I reached out to our county council member and friend Sidney Katz, who reached out to Montgomery County Department of Transit, and we're gonna get some more information from them on what they're thinking because I'm not very comfortable with the idea that there won't be any parking. I, I just don't really get it. I know there's cars, I, if you guys have any information on how many cars are using the Transit Center that exists, I'd love to see it because I haven't seen that data. It just doesn't seem practical, but that's something that I'm gonna keep pushing on the county for. And as I said, I think that you can count on the city to partner with you on any issues with S.H.A., because that's important and we've got some relationships. And as the mayor said, we don't always win, but we do pretty well. I think our batting average is, is pretty high. One last thing, in terms of, I think my friend and former colleague Mike Sesma made some good comments about trying to get to the activity places, but I have to think, I live in Kentlands and, you know, there's a lot of residences that are a pretty fair hike from where the retail and shops and restaurants are, and yet they make the hike because there's a lot to do there. So I'm much less worried about that. In the early days of the community, the clubhouse was the, the center of activity and the center, the clubhouse is located right smack in the middle of where the residences are. And as the, the lake area develops, I think people, you know, if there's stuff happening, if there's live music or whatever's going on, people will make the hike. So I'm much less concerned about that. As long as, as whoever's running that development continues to encourage that kind of activity. So anyway, I know we've, we've poked at a lot of details here and I don't want you to take it the wrong way. I think it's really come a long way. It's looking great. I'm very encouraged and like I said, let me know when, when I get a ride on a bulldozer. All right, thanks.
Thank you, Neil. I want to echo that. I want to thank you all for the presentation and for what I think was an excellent dialogue tonight. And I think this project, this application has come a long way and I feel like we're, we're going very, very much in the right direction. And that brings me to a question. I wanted to start with the planning commission. In terms of process, what do you guys think, John, that we need next? Do, have we put enough on the table that could be done through correspondence or do we need another work session or what is, what are your thoughts, John?
Conceptually, I think we need to reopen our record so that three big chunks can land, the dust can settle around, the design guidelines, how the Transit Center and residential stuff in E and F are gonna somehow play out the way we think somebody should, how somebody thinks it should play out. And then the Street One design lands with a little bit more definitives, kind of stronger scheme, whether it's gonna be a town square or a much, much broader, much more aggressive linear sort of structure. All three of those things affect what we'll ultimately make a recommendation to the mayor and council to approve. And it's important, it's an important step, so we need to know that those three things are within, now we can make a recommendation with some conditions, we can, you know, we can play with a little more, but I feel like those three, three things specifically need to be closer to their final SDP form, not their final, final site plan form, but their final SDP form, for us to have a reasonable...
And name the three things again?
The design guidelines, and there was a lot, there's a lot in play. You guys have already offered up a lot of revisions and we don't know how that's gonna land yet and we've talked about more items tonight. The Block F or Block E or both, how the Transit Center and the resident, the proposed residential in and around that is resolved once and for all. And then the Street One design, north to south, and how it's, it's ultimately developed in a way that fulfills all the comments we've talked about for public realm and green, green space and all that. And, and the ripple effect is those all affect, would affect, what will be property lines, which is part of what we're gonna be approving, am I right, Greg? Property lines at the SDP level and the design guidelines, which also get approved at SDP. So I want to make sure that we've seen at least a, a pretty final draft of those, those concepts before we go forward with our recommendations. So that's, that's where my thinking is. And where I think that puts us is, our record is currently set to close when, Greg?
It's expected to close at the end of this month. I don't have the exact date in front of me, I apologize.
Okay. So as a practical matter, I think we should time this so that those things can land and you guys can tell us better what that looks like in terms of time, so then we can see it, or it can enter the record, I should say. So then we can see it, or it can enter the record, I should say, before we have to close our record and then work on a recommendation.
Just to clarify, are you looking for additional work session to address these three topics or?
I don't think so. I'll defer to the council. I, I'll defer, I'm going to ask the council too, but in my opinion, I think we can, I don't think we need another work session, but I.
The packet's right.
It's debatable.
Packet's great from my, from my perspective. So if it's in, it's on paper.
I think if they deliver the updates based on what we've discussed and in sort of a, you know, a direct extrapolation, what we've talked about, if it's a reasonable kind of resolution of this, I think that's what we review.
Is there anything that could come in there that would say, oh no, we need a work session for or you're confident?
Could be.
Well, that could happen and if it, if it does, then.
It's always possible.
Yeah. It's always possible, but you know.
We don't recommend it.
What I'm hearing is reopen the records, extend the records, my apologies, to allow the applicant to work with staff a little longer to address the comments they heard tonight, the three major ones that Chair Bauer brought up. I can return to the next upcoming meetings with the council and the planning commission, working with the applicant on maybe some revised timelines and figuring from them how long they would need maybe to, to get to whatever meeting that calendar works out to be.
I mean, I'd like to get it on our discussion agenda sooner rather than later. I'm not looking to protract that. I just want to make sure we've got a good resolution to all we've talked about in a, in a show me, not a tell me way. So that we can, we can, you know, reasonably expect to put together a good recommendation.
Greg, do you have the, you have the record dates?
Yeah, the record date was for the planning commission, July 26th at 5:00 PM. And the council's was August 14th at 5:00 PM. So.
So July 26th is 18 days away. Is it likely that you would have all?
They would need time to submit to the staff within that, obviously to review the plans as well. The deadline that I had originally given the applicant was this Friday. Based off the amount of comments I heard tonight, I am concerned about the applicant making that deadline. They have come a long way, I will say that. I expect them to continue to address the comments and come a long way and get to addressing everything you guys are looking for satisfactory. But I do believe additional time working with staff would be beneficial to that, to the applicant's team.
Okay, and, and given that this is a work session, we can't, we can't officially like, we can't take official action here to reopen records or to change that, correct, Darno? To extend the record?
I mean, customarily you don't, however, I mean, the council could decide on its own discretion to do so, but.
Well, we would have to wait until next week to our regular meeting, correct? To transact that and you guys would have to.
The 17th.
If it's okay with the council and the planning commission, I can come to the next planning, council meeting next Monday and the planning commission meeting next Wednesday.
Fair enough.
With updated records. And I, again, I'm happy to work with the applicant to figure out what those, you know, what works for them as well.
Okay.
Again, we've, we're continuing to work with them. Obviously, we understand the importance of the project and we'll expedite the reviews as much as we possibly can.
That is, that is our goal to try to get this done as quickly as we can get it done.
And Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
You could close this work session and, and by act of the council, have a hearing or.
Or just you conduct this one.
After the close of this work session, then you all vote.
We'll do it. That's good to know. We'll do it next week anyway.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I think that's also good because you'll get a better sense or a look at the applicant's team. You'll get a better sense of what that looks like, what you need to do, what that needs to look like. Because we don't want to just arbitrarily pick a date and then it's really not a realistic date for you.
Yeah, and if, if we're able to speak at this point, we've worked with the staff and have already started laying out some of the game plan, not knowing exactly the conversations that are going to happen today. Some of what we presented is presentations of design guidelines that have already been updated and have already been changed. So I don't know exactly what percentage of work is already complete, but we're, we're, you know, time is of the essence that we've gotten to this point in the project, that we're committed to turning things around as quickly as possible.
Yeah, to that point, all of the specific design guideline changes that we discussed today have already been updated. The only thing that remains to be integrated is any plan changes on those two blocks.
That's right.
And may I ask a design clarification question? I'm tracking clearly with the three points. Would you mind summarizing for us one more time the items that we are analyzing and the goals that you would like us to achieve on the Block E and F comment? I think, I think we have a handle on it, but if you could articulate for us the specifics of what we're looking at on those blocks.
So, and, and one of them is related to the design and integration of the Transit Center, which is largely outside of our control right now.
So, I don't want to tell you how to do your job, but, but the presentations have had a very, very loose sense of a residential component, right? And we've talked a lot about whether it's this or that or circulation's here or there. I think you need to probably establish in no uncertain terms, an edge that's the Transit Center. Make, make some assumptions about what that thing is, right? And then respond to it with the rest of the block and then come up with a, with a direct proposal for what the residential is. Right now, we're sort of kind of throwing some things around, or it appears that way, the way it's been presented. So again, a firm, a firm presentation with all of the same sensitivity to outdoor space, to circulation, to all the things that you've applied to those other blocks, to this, this block as well.
And, and is it appropriate for us to work with staff? Like again, we could only have squeezed a certain number of plans and time into, into the work session tonight. We've got a lot of other studies that we've done over time. Is it okay for us to work with staff on that?
Absolutely.
It's, yeah, please do.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? All right. Well, thank you all, everybody at the dais for excellent participation and a great conversation. Thank you all. The next regular meeting of the mayor and council will be next Monday, July 15th, and we look forward to it. Until next time, let's do great things Gaithersburg. We are adjourned.